Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Wednesday, August 19, 2020 at 5:31 PM. John, would you please provide us with an introduction?
Yes, thank you. This is John McNally. I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the question section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the Raise Hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you so much, John. We will start off in invocation by Pastor Amelia Ash of First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Woodrow Elhay.
Let us gather in prayer. All merciful God, we gather here to lead, care, and support this community. Give our leaders wisdom, courage, and compassion. Give our citizens patience, understanding, and care for each other. At us all during these unordinary times, be with our first responders and all those who are caring for others. We ask this in the Lord's name and we all pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyvin Sirda.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow Elhay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina L. Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda approval, I believe that we have a revised agenda for tonight. And so anyone who is looking to get that, it will be under the handouts section of our GoToWebinar. I believe we're adding item 3C, a proclamation, and item 7A, which is the city's group insurance plan renewals. So may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
I have no disclosures, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Romulus.
No disclosures, Mayor, in terms of items on the agenda, but I do want to wish all the individuals from last night's election heartfelt congratulations and also wishing them the best and looking forward to working with all those who won. So, thank you.
And Commissioner Hay, do you have any informational items to disclose?
Yes, I do. No, no disclosures as far as talking with the internet developers, but events on Friday, the 14th, I did attend the ribbon cutting for Guac-O-Go 500 East Ocean Avenue. Then on Saturday, at 8:15, I went to a beautiful celebration at Sims, Sarah Sims Park for our former deputy fire chief, Latasha Denise Clemmons. It was very well attended. And it flowed. And on this past Sunday, there was a drive to the Poles caravan from one of the churches to Isa Hes- I estimated about 30 cars. And we had the police protection, which was outstanding. And then on today, I attended the special magistrate hearing, which I found to be quite interesting and very educational. Also today, I attended another ribbon cutting for Organic Kitchen and Merchant House at 640 East Ocean Avenue, Suite 6. And I do like to thank everyone for.
Yep, I believe you froze.
Yeah, and I hope and pray that your candidate won. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Katz?
That's it.
Nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. Thank you for myself. On August 6th, I attended a Zoom call with the Education Foundation, and they will be speaking here tonight, and also with Ed Tierney of the Palm Beach County School District. On the 13th, I attended Boca Raton State of the City event through their Chamber of Commerce. And I also spoke with Steve Abrams, the South Florida Regional Transit Authority, about the Boynton Beach train station. On the 14th, I attended VJ Day, Victory Over Japan, for their surrender. And I believe it was the 75th anniversary of that event at Tom Kaiser Veteran Park. And I want to thank staff and everyone that was involved to make sure that the sign looks as beautiful as it does now. Afterwards, I attended the ribbon cutting for Guac-O-Go with Commissioner Hay. I ordered the food. It's delicious and healthy and looking forward to going there soon. On the 15th, I attended the event with the Community Review Board honoring Latasha Denise Clemmons, our former deputy fire chief. The 17th, I attended the QPOD meeting and spoke with Ally Sewell of GoBrightline to learn a little bit more about transit throughout South Florida. Yeah, in addition, on the 18th, I attended, went to Boynton Beach Community High School for their laptop or Chromebook distribution to the juniors and seniors and had conversations with Dr. Lockhart about how we, as the city, are going to be working with the individual public schools. Because we have an interlocal agreement, but I believe we need to revise that interlocal agreement to better reflect the current state of our society. I'd like to continue with what our Parks and Recs Department has done in the past of providing intramurals after school. Because one of the things we didn't realize about not having school for elementary students is there's no longer recess. And the fact that the city of Boynton Beach has facilities and can partner with the school district, I feel we need to explore the possibilities to making sure that our youths are leaving the house safely, if possible, with parent supervision and waivers. And I think that is it for me, and I do apologize. I was requested to move up 9B, discussion for International Kinetic Arts Fair, after public audience. So I'd like to motion to amend the current agenda so that we can move that item up, 9B, after public audience.
Done, moved.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Is there any other informational items by the members of the City Commission? Saying none. Moving on to announcements, community special events, and presentations. Our first is the presentation of the 21st Annual Bob Barovy Student Citizen of the Year Award by members of the Education and Youth Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor Grant, fellow commissioners, not fellow commissioners, commissioners of Boynton Beach, and everybody on the dais, and of course, our Boynton Beach citizens. My name is Greg Murphy. I serve as the vice chair for the Education Youth Advisory Board, and my purpose here is to present the 2020 Bob Barovy Student Citizen of the Year Award. The Bob Barovy Student Citizen of the Year Award was created in 2000 to recognize graduating seniors who epitomize the spirit of volunteerism and giving to the community, illustrated by the late Bob Barovy, a U.S. veteran and former advisory board member and active member of the Boynton Beach community. Our school seniors write an essay on what they have learned from performing volunteer community service and provide three letters of recommendation. The winner must be of good moral character, complete significant volunteer work, and made positive contributions to his or her community. The award is funded through donations secured by the Education and Youth Advisory Board, and the winner is selected by a panel of judges, including last year's winner. Thank you to this year's judges, Dr. Jutan Shannon from the School District Department of County, Debbie Majors, City of Boynton Beach Grants and ADA Coordinator, and Kathleen Wilkinson, last year's recipient. Since the inception of the award, the Education and Youth Advisory Board has distributed $226,250 in scholarships to 46 high school seniors. This year's recipient is of the 21st Annual Bob Barovy Student Citizen Award. Citizen of the Year Award will receive $1,000 and her name will be placed on a permanent plaque. And our honoree is Ashley Backus. Ashley graduated from the ABY program at Atlantic Community High School and performed over 400 hours of community service. Described by one of her teachers as "one of the most gracious, graceful, and grateful students I've ever had the good fortune to teach." Musically active in the school band and Gold Coast Band Community Ensemble, she learned the value of communication and cooperation. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, National Society of High School Scholars, and received numerous accolades, including Atlantic Community High School Student of the Month, Rotary Club Student of the Month, Path Final nominee, President's Volunteer Service Award, and Girl Scouts of America Gold Award, among many others. Her extensive and varied community service activities include sorting and organizing food to feed the hungry or feeding South Florida, cleaning food from local farms to provide those in need with the CROS ministries, serving as a student ambassador for sister cities of Delray Beach, both hosting an international student and representing the organization by traveling to Japan. Various activities with the Girl Scouts of Americas over the past years, including leadership roles during high school and Boynton Beach, Boynton Green Cleanup Projects with Sea Angels Green Beach Clean and the Delray Beach Boys and Girls Club. Ashley will be attending the University of Florida, and she plans to major in mechanical engineering with a concentration in aerospace engineering. Her career plans is to work in an air spacecraft, and she would love to take flight lessons as well. So on behalf of the entire Education Youth Advisory Board, we say congratulations to Ashley Backus, our 21st Bob Barovy Student Citizen of the Year honoree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Ashley here to speak?
Oh, yeah, hi, I'm here.
Good.
All right, well, congratulations, and do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the city of Boynton Beach and thank you to everyone involved with the Bob Barovy Scholarship, because it was, of course, always my pleasure to volunteer for my community. And I'm so grateful that you guys are able to help give me a kickstart to my education and really my future. So, thank you.
All right. And Commissioner Hay, I see your hand raised. You're muted, we can't hear you through your microphone.
I just wanted to say congratulations to or you can't hear me through my microphone.
I'm sorry, your ear, it's delayed, so your mouth is not moving with the words. So you speak fine.
Okay. I just wanted to say congratulations to Angela Bassett and to Greg Murphy and his group and his committee on a job well done with the Educational Youth Advisory Board. And just keep up the good works. I like to see our young people involved like they're making sure they are. So, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations and wishing you the best success throughout college and looking forward to you coming back here to Boynton Beach with the skills that you've obtained at a higher education.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next announcement is to proclaim August 31st, 2020, as International Overdose Awareness Day. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas addiction is an American Medical Association-defined disease and the stigma associated with addiction must be addressed so that no one feels shame or disgrace over illegal or illegal drug poisoning overdose. And whereas drug poisoning is the number one cause of injury deaths to the nation with an accidental drug overdose death occurring every 11 minutes, surpassing deaths from motor vehicle accidents or gun homicides. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, 67,367 people died in the United States as a result of drug poisoning, or 185 per day during 2018. And whereas, according to the Florida Medical Examiners Commission, there were 4,698 accidental deaths in the state of Florida during 2018 caused by a prescription drug poisoning, representing a 45% increase over the previous year. Whereas, the city of Boynton Beach remains committed to raising awareness in order to combat stigma and educate our community about prescription drug poisoning prevention. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 31st day of August, 2020, as International Overdose Awareness Day and urge all residents to learn about the disease and to aid and support those that are affected by it. You know, this is something we've done every year, and the main reason why is that I want to implore the public that it's okay to ask for help. You know, we in Palm Beach County have a wonderful resource with 211. It is the non-emergency hotline that at any time, any day, you can call them and they can provide support for any various inquiries that you may have. In addition, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255, as we need to make sure that this cause of death is no longer afflicting our society and our citizens. Next, proclamation encouraging all citizens to honor June 19 through August 25, 2020, as a period of reflection, cultural and public education, earnest assessment, planning, and commitment to end systematic racism in all forms to dehumanization which threaten equality and freedom for all. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas June 19, 2020, best known as Juneteenth or Freedom Day, marked the 155th anniversary of the arrival of Union General Gordon Granger in Galveston, Texas, where two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, African-Americans learned the end of the end of enslavement. And whereas, since its federal enactment in January 2018, Public Law 115-102 threw its sunset in June 2021, the 400 Years of African-American History Commission will fulfill its charge to educate the public about recognizing and highlight the resilience and contribution of African-Americans since 1690 and to acknowledge the impact that slavery and laws that enforced racial discrimination had on the United States. And whereas, on August 25, 2020, we write new history as we acknowledge another year since the 400th anniversary of the first documented arrival of Africans in the American colonies by looking forward to confront differences between the concept of freedom versus the reality of freedom. And whereas, America must never forget or repeat its vivid and tragic examples of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanizing impact of racial violence. From chattel enslavement to convict leasing, from thousands of lynchings to racial massacres like Tulsa, Oklahoma in 1921, and Rosewood, Florida in 1923, from segregation to voter disenfranchisement, from mass incarceration to wrongfully inflicted violence about the innocent who fought for freedom as captured by media in Selma, Alabama, at the Edmund Pettus Bridge, or the images of children, now parents and grandparents, who in Birmingham, among countless examples, endured the bites and anguish of unleashed dogs. And whereas, we must collectively strive to close gaps of immeasurable distance between us and affirm the promise of the Declaration of Independence that all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and hold that the purpose of the American government must secure these rights for all. We must reject acts of violence and expand opportunities to understand and learn from our frank and complex conversations. Juneteenth through August 25, 2020 will serve as benchmarks to encourage individual and collective reflection and transformation. It is therefore, it is through leadership and courage that we each have a responsibility to confront entrenchments which perpetuate injustice or a threat to America's true greatness. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, respectfully join municipal leaders across the country and the 400 Years of African-American History Commission in spirit and solidarity. And by proclamation, I thereby encourage all citizens to honor June 19 through August 25, 2020, as a period of reflection, cultural and public education, earnest assessment, planning, and commitment to end systematic racism in all forms of dehumanization which threaten equality and freedom for all. And witness whereof, I have here and set my hand this 19th day of August, 2020. And we do have some people here at City Hall who are going to accept the proclamation.
Can you swing the camera around just a little bit more?
Okay.
Next time.
Oh yeah, I know that there's a glare from the glass in the back.
Right.
You state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, the Torrey Orf, 7th North Beach, 17th Avenue, Park and 101.
Maurice Hayes, Labor, Florida, 3, 520, Park and 3.
Darrell Sanders, 2001, Northland 2nd Street, of Boynton Beach, Florida. How you doing, Mayor? Appreciate the picture and tag. Well, we're here today as Boynton Strong accepts this proclamation of Juneteenth. This is a great step. A strong solidarity, you know? And it's only to go forward from here. Why go forward from here? That's all I have to say.
All right, so, yep. Yep, thank everybody for giving us a chance to try and make our community better. We just want this, 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 just one part of this, just keep what we doing though. Boynton Strong.
Darrell Sanders with Chevy DTV Foundation. I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Boynton for acknowledging this great moment in history and recognizing African-American contributions to the U.S. I would also like to thank the city for recognizing that we do have a diverse culture here in Boynton Beach. There's multiple cultures here. And we look forward to partnering up with Parks and Recreation, the Police Department, and all the departments we need to make sure that this holiday is celebrated in the right way and educational for our community and that everyone can be involved. So, yeah, and I would like to also get an email to someone that I can contact to further. Along with Boynton Strong, we can plan a nice event yearly to recognize the Juneteenth holiday. And thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I know that one of the things that we did last year that we don't want to repeat is that our MLK Committee had about a month to plan Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. And so I'd like, with the consensus of the commission, to start the planning in September, getting the different community leaders and members on board so that we can form different committees so that we have the Day of Service, Martin Luther King Jr. Remembrance, African-American History, and Juneteenth Celebration in coordination with the city.
I couldn't agree more.
Yes, I agree.
And just to.
All right, thank you.
By Mayor, would it be the same group for all those events? It would be a overall reaching group, the task force with separate committees so that everybody has their own responsibilities and, but they're working together so that each other can use best practices for the different events going on and spread the information of what's going on in the city of Boynton Beach.
Sounds good. What's the best way to get somebody involved in that? Should I just forward them to you?
I would, I'm sorry to say, but I would think Eleanor Chrisell and Hurst's team. You know, when we have the events manager and the city, you know, currently she still holds that title.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I would like to say that I would like to see Gregory Murphy be involved with that, even if he's not the chair, but he's played a role in that in the past, and I'm sure that he knows who to contact. So have Eleanor reach out to him, and I'm sure that he would be of great help.
I would request that he contacts Eleanor so that it's not, so it's a volunteer basis.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Katz?
Could you just run down the list real quick again of each individual committee and/or task force?
This is, what I'm proposing would be the Day of Service, the Martin Luther King Jr. Event, African-American History Month of February, and Juneteenth. So that way, it is committees with the different days for programming and events.
Okay, and I guess a question maybe for the city manager. I know you referenced an advanced planner position. Is there any assistance or relief coming for our marketing department? Just with, with the amount of work that they have, I just, I'm always very considerate of workers and responsibilities and workloads. And if, if we don't have plans to provide support or we haven't filled a position yet, is there a timeline or expectation for additional assistance?
We do have a vacancy that I know, Eleanor, they're actively recruiting right now. You know, we can kick off, yeah, that's a lot. We will rely very heavily on volunteers on that, but somebody has to organize and manage the volunteers, and that in itself could be a task. You know, depending on, also, we could certainly kick off in September and start some initial planning, but we have the parade. We have to figure out what we're doing with the tree lighting this year, what we're doing with the holiday parade. That is tremendous planning. So I'm just going to say upfront, we can get the ball going, but probably won't be able to go full force till we, you know, Eleanor, they can only do. say upfront, we can get the ball going, but probably won't be able to go full force till we, you know, Eleanor, they can only do so much.
Correct. I'm not saying that the city is the the host, but the city is a partner.
And that's about the only way we can make that work, Mayor. Good.
So that's kind of where we're working, you know, the MLK Committee never formed, I believe, an LLC. And so we will work with, you know, business entities and individuals that are volunteering to partner with the city. And that there isn't a duplication so that we know of the the one event that's going on for each of those days and months. All right, so we'll start with a we'll start with a meeting and we'll we'll see what information we can get. All right, our next announcement is a flag distribution event to be held in September by Eleanor Chrisell, Public Communications and Marketing Director.
Eleanor, you unmuted. John just unmuted me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Eleanor Chrisell, Marketing Director. Since COVID-19, as you well know, the city has been unable to host public veterans events. To acknowledge the importance of these dates and history and to support our local restaurants, we have been doing free flag distribution events, and so far we have done seven. And I'm going to just go through them as as quickly as I can so that you part of the whole theory behind this was to support our local restaurants who are having a difficult time during the COVID-19 as well. So at Mission BBQ on Memorial Day in May, we distributed flags at Boardwalk Ice, Italian Ice and Creamery on D-Day in June, Common Grounds Brew and Roastery on Flag Day in June, Boynton Diner on July 4th, Bond Street Ale and Coffee on July 4th, Green Owl Restaurant on July 4th, and Jupiter Donuts on July 4th. 500 flags have been distributed to date. Our hope is that because we are celebrating our centennial that we want to hit 1,000, even though we're 100, but we want to do 100 times 10 locations. So with that in mind, we are in September hosting two more flag distribution events as scheduled. And September 2nd will be honoring VJ Day, and that will be happening at Prime Catch between 11:30 and 1:30, and they have been graciously allowing free valet parking for those that would like to attend and eat lunch there and receive a free flag and postcard of their our postcards, which I'm going to go over next next commission meeting will be handed out at all of these, has been handed out and will be handed out at all of these. The second event will be held on September 7th in honor of Labor Day, and that will be at Brooklyn Water Bagel from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And as always, we encourage the public to follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor for additional updates on these events and further details. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next announcement is from Dr. Adam Miller, Director of Education Technology, and James Gabrillos, President and CEO of Education Foundation of Palm Beach County, who will give a presentation on the Digital Inclusion Initiative.
Thank you and good evening. Will I have access to share my screen, please?
All right, John?
We, I think we have the presentation preloaded.
Oh, wonderful.
And so you'll just have to state the next slide.
Sounds great to me. Well, thank you for that. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Grant and Commissioners. My name is Adam Miller. I'm the Director of Educational Technology for the School District. Presenting with me is James Gabrillos, as you said, the CEO of the Ed Foundation. Also like to pass on the regrets after Peter Peter Locata, the South Regional Superintendent. He is attending the school board meeting that is going on right at this minute. And I thank you again for your time. So if I can take everyone back to March, when we had to close our school buildings down, at that time, we knew we had some big hurdles to overcome with for our students if they were going to attend education virtually. And two pieces of that puzzle specifically were making sure they had a device to go online and participate in instruction as well as having internet access. This Digital Inclusion Initiative is kind of a culmination of all of that work to bring that forward. Next slide, please. This is our school district vision and mission. I just want to point out in our mission is to empower each and every student to reach his or her highest potential. And this initiative is focused on ensuring that occurs. Next slide, please. So the first part of the puzzle I mentioned is devices. So if you recall in the spring, we all saw lots of pictures and videos of all of our principals giving out lots of wonderful devices to the students. And I know our T R principals are involved in that project again as Mayor Grant experienced a Boynton High. So back in the spring, we gave out 61,000 devices to our students. We are currently, we've currently purchased 82,000 additional devices that we are going to be rolling out to our students. We're already starting that this week and will continue each and every week. Our goal is to get to what's called a one-to-one, where every student in our school district can have access to a device. And that's coming at a price tag of $25 million that the school district is investing for all of our students. Next slide, please. So that's the first piece of the puzzle, but the second piece is internet access. And and really, our mission here is to grant all students regardless of where they live, access a reliable internet service in their homes, in their neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So specifically in Boynton Beach, we've done a few surveys. This is from the Spring Survey of our families. And as we can see, our schools here in Boynton Beach, this is one data point, which is in orange, the percentage of respondents selling us that they did not have internet at home. And you can see for your schools here, our schools here in Boynton Beach, we go from anywhere from 8% up to 25% responding that they do not have internet in the home, and you can see the breakdowns of numbers by school that reported in spring. So this is definitely a need in Boynton Beach. If you can go to the next slide, please. So to tackle this, we've incorporated two short-term solutions I'm going to talk about briefly, and then one long-term solution that's the main crux of our presentation. So two short-term solutions. The first is Comcast Internet Essentials, which we've offered every year. Basically, if a student is on free reduced lunch or the family qualifies, they are entitled to get internet in their home for $9.95 a month, which and Comcast has been a great partner with us over many, many years with this program. Recently Comcast, actually the summer Comcast expanded the program to allow sponsorships to occur, which means an organization such as the school district can purchase the Comcast Internet Essentials for families. So we have purchased 15,000 sponsorships for our families that would cover six months of internet service for our families. We've also purchased 5,000 T-Mobile hotspots, as you see on the right side, that would offer unlimited data. And that would be for 12 months of service that we can give to our families. So together, those two solutions will allow us to connect 20,000 families in our community across our big county. Our preferred option is are the Comcast, because we have 15,000 of them. But Comcast cannot get into every home or neighborhood, so that's where the hotspots come in. But again, these are short-term solutions. These are only going to last six months to a year. We know once the funding for these goes away, our families that need this are going to be right back where they were before, and we don't want that for our students. We want them to be able to connect. So next slide, please. So that brings us to our long-term solution, what we're calling a Wi-Fi mesh coverage in areas of our highest need. Kind of if you've been to New York City, they have Wi-Fi you can connect to on your phone. That would be a very similar concept here. Next slide, please. So this Wi-Fi mesh coverage is not new to our county. We've actually done this before about 10 to 15 years ago in the West Palm Beach, specifically Pleasant City area and Delray Beach. We did a proof of concept working with the county and other groups to lay fiber and put up Wi-Fi access points on traffic signals, FPN old poles. And then we provided devices to students, and it went very well. Actually, those two networks are still up and actually giving a signal. They do need to be refreshed. Unfortunately, those projects were not continued or expanded from that work 10 to 15 years ago, but we did learn a lot of lessons. And a lot of the group members that were working on that project are still around and working together. So that brings us to today. The county has received a 10 million, they've received a lot of CARES funds, and they have allocated $10 million of those CARES funds to building a Wi-Fi mesh coverage area in our county. I'm going to get to the specifics of building that infrastructure, but basically the CARES funds will help build out the infrastructure, and they're partnering with us to put that up in specific areas, which we'll talk about. A key point, though, is that these CARES funds do need to be expended by December 30th of this year, so we have a very tight timeline. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to give you a very high technical level of what this Wi-Fi mesh looks like and how it's built. So starting in the top left of the slide, the county will come in and lay fiber optic cable to different points, and those fiber optic cables will connect to what are called root radios. And those root radios are actually stationed on county buildings as well as school district buildings. Those root radios send out a signal to the next radio in line, which are called mesh radios, and you need a lot of mesh radios to create that mesh of Wi-Fi, right? The root radios are actually what sends out the Wi-Fi signal. So and they're placed on poles and other vertical assets. That's the county's work, install laying the fiber optic cable, installing the root radios and the mesh radios and connecting them all to make the area hot, if you will, with the Wi-Fi. But there is a missing piece. Once that Wi-Fi mesh is going on, many of us have Wi-Fi in our homes. Sometimes that Wi-Fi does not reach all areas of our homes, and we need something called a Wi-Fi extender that'll grab the signal and kind of blast out to different areas. So depending on the structure or the materials of a family, the house of a family that lives in, they live in, they might not be able to get that signal directly into their home. So we need to actually provide those families with a Wi-Fi extender, and you see an example pictured there. Together with that extender and the Wi-Fi mesh, then the family can enjoy Wi-Fi. Next slide, please. So that's the mesh, but so we had the plan of what to put together, but then we needed to know the where. And the county kind of relied on us to pinpoint some priority areas. And what you see here is a map of our county. We call it a heat map that shows the density of students on free reduced lunch. So your areas of dark red and red are the areas of greatest concentrations of students who are living that are on free reduced lunch. And we prioritize those areas as the areas to be in in our county. You notice there are orange and yellow areas. However, we're focused on these municipal Wi-Fi mesh right now, with those CARES funds have to be expended by December 30th on these red area, dark red and red areas. If you go to the next slide, please. So specifically in Boynton Beach, the county, you know, wants to come in and put in that Wi-Fi mesh for your students, the students living in Boynton Beach. As you can see with this representation of your city limits, the Wi-Fi mesh would be focused on the areas of red, although it will spill over into some of the areas orange. It's going to be up to the county once they finish surveying and determining exactly where that Wi-Fi mesh will go to get our exact coverage area. But right now, just looking at the red areas, that would cover about 2,300 for students on free reduced lunch or even 2,700, you know, all your students. And we're really focused on the students for free reduced lunch here, but some others may benefit as well. Next slide, please. So these are, this is kind of the phase phase implementation we've done for this. The county is already working, and I have to give it to Mr. Mike Butler from the county, the Director of IT or IS over there. I'm just doing an amazing job working his crews around the clock. He has eight crews out. They've already started laying fiber and other pieces in the Glades region in Lakewood Beach, and you can see that's our first phase. That should be completed by September. The second phase will be Riviera, Pleasant City area in West Palm Beach. And the third phase will include Boynton Beach as well as the other cities you see there. So so that this is where you come in and where we we were hoping, well, I'm not going to say we're hoping that this Wi-Fi mesh should be up by December where your students can enjoy. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn the presentation over to James Gabrillos to take over the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and good evening, Mayor Grant, members of the City Commission of West of Boynton Beach. First of all, I commend you. You know, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night when you're listening to these presentations, they're mind-numbing, and your attentiveness and your ability to wrap your head around this information, it's impressive. Here is a breakdown of the various partnerships that have gone into this collaboration. You see on the side of Palm Beach County, they're investing over $20 million in the infrastructure piece of the puzzle. And as Dr. Miller pointed out, that's your fiber, the radios, the poles, et cetera. The second piece of the puzzle is obviously the Palm Beach County School District. And you can see that they have committed over $45 million in funds to make sure that every child has a device, a Chromebook. But that begs the question that if the device can't connect to the internet, what what good is it? And that leads us to that third piece of the puzzle on the far right of your screen, the community partners. You notice laptop donations. That was actually, most of that was the work of the Education Foundation, the organization of which I am the CEO. We were able to raise over $650,000, which went to purchase Chromebooks for immediate need. And then partnerships with United Way of Palm Beach County, the Town of Palm Beach United Way, and Quantum Foundation, among others, were able to purchase the hotspots that Dr. Miller spoke of through the summer and into the early part. And then these sponsorships, which a lot of that is through the Children's Services Council as well as the school district to make sure that the the young people can have the internet access through Comcast and Internet Essentials. And that brings us to the final piece of the puzzle, these Wi-Fi extenders. I'm going to ask that you follow me on this. We need to see that this is much more than connecting kids for August 31st when we start school. There is a much greater issue facing us, and that is the issue of the digital divide. This is a program that is not just about education. It is about digital inclusion. As an illustration or a comparison, I would draw our attention back to the 1930s when America launched the TVA, the Tennessee Valley Authority, to bring electricity to every part of the country. If you didn't have electricity back then, you could not function in the world. Well, ladies and gentlemen, today, if you don't have the internet, you can't function. You can't do your studies. You can't learn. You can't apply for a job. You can't apply for city services. You can't even apply for a bus pass from Palm Trans unless you have access to the internet. And until we have total digital inclusion, when every member of our community is able to access the internet, the digital divide is going to result in tremendous health, poverty, and a variety of other issues. I I know some of you from from my past. I know this of which I speak. For 10 years, I ran Boca Helping Hands, the soup kitchen and pantry down in Boca Raton. I know what happens when people are disconnected from the community. And so this digital inclusion plan is really in the spirit of what we do best as a community. We come together with you, the government, the private sector, the philanthropic sector, the education. We're all going to come together on this. On these Wi-Fi extenders, this is the piece of the puzzle where the Ed Foundation is stepping in right now to get this this fundraising jump started. There's basically a $35 version. There's a 50 to $55 version and a $75 version. The reality is the school district will be purchasing the proper device, but a lot of their purchasing is going to be based on supply chain. We need 25,000 of them. According to the school district surveys, there are roughly 25,000 children in the school district right now who cannot connect to the internet. That means their families cannot connect to the internet. So I'm looking at this coronavirus as a catalyst for us as a community to do something that quite honestly, we should have done 10 years ago. Make sure that every citizen of Palm Beach County has access to the internet and all that the internet brings into our daily lives. Here's what we need from the city of Boynton Beach and what we need from you, Mayor, and what we need from you, the city commissioners. Number one, we need vertical access. If you have poles or high places where some of the equipment of which Dr. Miller spoke can be installed, we need that. If you have poles or high places where some of the equipment of which Dr. Miller spoke can be installed, we need that. I'm told, and I'm no expert on this, so technical questions, I'll refer over to Dr. Miller and Duck. But I'm told that the electricity that's required to power these is basically about what it takes to run a coffee pot. So, you know, again, the financial outline, the electricity is de minimis. But certainly, we need these, these vertical assets so that the various pieces of equipment can be installed and this mesh network can be created. You notice at the bottom of the slide, identifying and engage local business partners to support families. Help us help you. Connect us to the business and philanthropic leaders in your community that you think might be willing to support this effort. I would put this out to every citizen of Palm Beach County. We need twenty-five thousand Wi-Fi extenders for twenty-five thousand families that are currently excluded from the digital internet world. Are you going to tell me we can't find twenty-five thousand families who would just sponsor one family each? Here's something to think about. According to statistics last year, Americans spent an average of eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents on Halloween candy. Now, all of us, in particular me, could probably do with a few less Reese's Peanut Butter Cups. For what we spent on candy, we could sponsor a family to have access to the internet and all that the internet brings to the daily life of the citizens of Palm Beach County. This is the challenge that we're issuing to our fellow citizens. So individuals can support this effort. Businesses can support this effort. Community groups, Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis, service organizations, Lions can support this effort. Governments can support this effort. We're going to do what we do best, which is bring this community together to address and more importantly, solve a critical community need. Next slide, please. There's a couple of different parts to what we're doing. On the one hand, there's the Wi-Fi extenders, the piece I've been speaking about. There's a second piece to this puzzle that's being spearheaded by Quantum Foundation. We call this the navigator piece. Mayor, you're in front of me. You and I have spoken, so I'll use you. I don't want to pick on Justin Katz. He's my buddy from the school district, so I think I could pick on Justin, Mayor. Justin, you and I have a computer program. Our computer crashes. We do what every good, logical, rational-thinking adult does. We call our teenage children and we say, how do we fix this doggone thing? We're dealing with a population that doesn't know how to do that. They don't know how to reboot their computer. They don't know how to fix it. They don't know how to dial for customer service or technical support. In many cases, they're language problems. They don't speak English. Or they don't speak English well enough to be able to navigate the system. Quantum Foundation is committing their own resources, and they're inviting partners to partner with them to raise four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will fund navigators, human personnel who will go out into our community and conduct community workshops and teach families how to access the internet, how to troubleshoot problems, and in general, how to make full use of the blessings that the internet brings to our daily life. So if you know people in Boynton Beach, as I said, individuals, community groups, churches and synagogues, businesses, or certainly the government sector, who would like to support either the Wi-Fi extender plan or the navigator plan, we at the Education Foundation are ready to be that, that agency that will help. I'm not asking you to raise the money. That's my job. Just connect me. Invite me to lunch. Introduce me to someone that you think might be interested. And when we think about what we blew last year on Halloween candy, we can all get out our checkbooks and write a check for eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents and make sure that one of our fellow citizens in Palm Beach County can access the internet. Dr. Miller, I'll pause there and I'll take, if we can take some questions, or I'll kick it back to you as the extra. And I want to thank you, the City Commission, and certainly Mayor Grant. And Justin, I don't see you tonight. I'm used to seeing you at our school board meetings, but it's good to at least hear your voice. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is James Gavirlos, and I am the CEO of Your Education Foundation of Palm Beach County.
Mayor.
Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Katz. I apologize for interrupting two minutes ago. I just wanted to say, thank you for everything the Education Foundation does and Mr. Gavirlos as well. As he said, I see him all the time at the district and he's been an amazing leader of that organization for as many years as he's done it. And also, if he's aware that I have a teenage child out there in the world, tell him to tell them to contact me. That would be information I would need to know, and I could do a better job at being a father than I have been by knowing that they exist. Thank you.
If I can add one other piece to Mr. Gavirlos's message. I failed to mention before, the Wi-Fi extenders and this municipal Wi-Fi mesh will give families at least five years of internet access so their students can get online and learn. And the reason I say five years, the networks will be kept up by the county is that, you know, the Wi-Fi centers, any device only lasts, you know, we can only guarantee it lasts five years before we have to refresh it. But for that eighty-five dollars Mr. Gavirlos is mentioning, a family will have internet access for at least five years, which is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And so, James, my, my question is, is that the way that I was able to purchase supplies to the Red Apple Fund, can I just go to the Education Foundation, click donation and make my donation for at least one family to have the Wi-Fi extender?
That is correct, sir. And what you would want to do, when I ask you what it's the purpose, you would say digital inclusion. And we'll make sure those funds go to the right, to the right people. Where the go-between is the funds come in, as the fiscal agent, for those funds to be turned over to the school district to make sure that we get this program up and running for the immediate need as well as the long term. So I appreciate you stepping up front and front and center again, sir.
My pleasure. Yes, Commissioner Hay, followed by Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm very pleased and happy on what you are doing. I guess this question would be for probably Adam. From a technical standpoint, I noticed the picture of the extender that you selected. I'm having similar problems of, you know, fading in and out. Was there any research done to say that's the best one for the, for the cost? Is it more cost effective and the functionality of it, is that, did you do any research there? How did you pick that?
Yeah, yes, sir. Commissioner Hayes, good to see you, sir. Great question. So what we did is we've been working with our contacts through the ed tech field, identified some Wi-Fi extenders to test out, and we provided those to the county to, who load tested the extenders. Then when you see pictured there is the more expensive version, we show that, right? As Mr. Gavirlos stated, there might be supply chain issues. There's a thirty, you know, around a thirty-dollar price point, around a fifty-dollar price point. We think we're going to have to use a mix of all three. So, you know, I think the county actually, you know, gave us the go-ahead on those and agrees those will work with the system they're putting up. So we did thorough testing with those Wi-Fi extenders.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to both of the presenters and everybody involved. This is going to do wonders for so many families. I do have a couple of questions, some related to short-term action, some more of the long term. In terms of, as we all know, you know, school is coming up. I think we've got two weeks. And on your PowerPoint, this project isn't coming to Boynton until much later. Are there any plans to distribute those hotspots temporarily, or is that already happening?
Yes, great question. Yes, that is already happening. As I mentioned in the presentation, you know, we have our short-term strategies, which are hotspots and the Comcast Internet Essentials sponsorships. The school district and others, we've already purchased fifteen thousand and five thousand. And that, my department is working with all the principals to identify the students that are in need. And we are deploying those to the schools right now, who are then deploying them to the families. So right, we're in the midst of that right now, and the rush is really to get all of those students identifying, get them the resources, those families the resources right now, so they're set up for August thirty-first when school starts.
All right, I appreciate that. I also wanted to ask, because I think it, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think certain people would be more likely to donate to those Wi-Fi extenders if they knew it was going to somebody in need within their area. Is there a way to kind of designate your donation?
Adam, you want me to take that one?
Go ahead, sir.
Yep, and Vice Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate your insight and your question. And the answer is an emphatic, resounding and happy yes. What anyone needs to do when they make their donation is say, we would like it to go to Palm Beach County, Boynton Beach, Riviera Beach, whatever your, and we will make sure that when that piece of the puzzle comes online, those funds are there. That's, this is the role that the Education Foundation does. The school district has got more than enough on its plate right now. I don't know how Dr. Miller and his team are breathing with everything they've had to do in the last couple of months. Our job on the Education Foundation is to manage this and make sure that the funds, if they are restricted, go to the area of restriction. So yeah, absolutely, that's a possibility.
All right. And I think my next question may be for you, Mr. Gavirlos. What, first of all, what you said about the digital divide just rang true to me in every way. So what happens during the summertime? And will this be open for use for non-students, just general residents?
And the answer again is an absolute yes. And Vice Mayor, I really appreciate your question because I think you and I probably would get along. As I mentioned, running a soup kitchen for ten years, you start to understand what separates the haves and the have-nots in this country. And it's not money. Money's the, money's the outer manifestation. The real problem is part of it is access to the internet. It's the digital divide and it's access to education and it's literacy. These are the things that really create poverty in America. And again, trust me, as somebody who ran a soup kitchen for ten years, I know what puts people into poverty. And so the direct answer to your question is absolutely. These Wi-Fi extenders, you know, there's no governor on it that says you can only use it between the hours of nine and five in school. It brings the internet into the family. And so if the parents are trying to apply for a job, or if they're trying to apply for SNAP benefits, as I said, if they're trying to get a bus pass or access to healthcare, make an appointment with their doctor. I mean, think about where medicine is going. I've had five doctor's appointments in the last three months, all of them have been done digitally. What do you do if you don't have digital access? Sick days are going to become a thing of the past. When a child stays home sick, if they have access to the internet in the coming years, if not months, that child doesn't miss school anymore. They're going to access it via the internet. And so eliminating the digital divide, or I like to say the positive, creating digital inclusion is, I believe, one of the most critical issues facing us as a community right now.
You've answered my questions. Thank you both for all the great work you guys are doing and everybody involved. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Gavirlos.
Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the Education Foundation for everything they've been doing. Myself, along with a couple other women in local government, Vice Mayor Katrina Long Robinson, Commissioner Chelsea Reed in Palm Beach Gardens. We've been in communication with them for a little bit now, trying to figure out how do we galvanize and get all these other cities on board and really kind of do what we've been thinking about for the last few weeks as well in terms of how can we as a city contribute and do our part. So, you know, just thank you for everything that you guys have been doing, the school district, the Education Foundation. Just, I'm floored and beyond words, you know, that, that we're even to this point. And, you know, the small part that I can contribute, you know, especially as, as a mother who has two kids in the school district right now, a seven-year-old and a four-year-old. You know, I, I see it from my end. I'm stressed from my end, so I can only imagine how it is for you guys. But just again, you know, my, my heartfelt thank you. And again, my, my way of contributing is, once we, I believe I might be out of my commissioner discretionary funds, but once we restart the new fiscal year, I'd like to dedicate my, my two thousand to the Education Foundation to, to contribute towards these, these Wi-Fi extenders and whatever other necessary expenses that that two thousand can go towards.
Christina, that sound you hear is me river dancing, so I just, I can't thank you enough. I'm just not the guy who runs the foundation. I have four. I don't believe I have to do this. A shout out to the Gators. My fourth is graduated and I'm taking her up to Gainesville tomorrow to check her into Gatorville. So, yeah, this is a passion for me, not just professionally, but personally, because I got kids here too.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other further questions from the commission? Seeing none, I appreciate your, the information and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much. Our next announcement is that the Regular Commission meeting is set for Tuesday, September first, 2020 at 5:30 PM. The location is TBD. Does that mean we don't know whether it's going to be virtual or not yet?
I think we are going virtual, Mayor, all the way through the end of September.
Okay, and I'd like to continue using the community room until the city chambers are open and available. The next meeting that this city will have is on Tuesday, September eighth at 5:30. The first public budget hearing to adopt the proposed budget and to adopt the final fire assessment rate resolution. This will be before the Boynton Beach CRAs meeting that also starts at 5:30. Regular Commission meeting on Tuesday, September fifteenth, 2020 at 5:30 PM. And then Tuesday, September twenty-second at 5:30, the second public budget hearing to adopt the final millage rate and final budget. And so, Lori, are we going to, at those budget hearings, receive any updated numbers of revenues and expenses for the city?
Yes, we'll have, I think we've recently, we're getting some true-up numbers now from the Department of Revenue as far as estimations for next year. And they peel back on our revenues now. So yes, we should have a much, we'll have updated numbers for you.
All right. And that is it for announcements. And we will move on to public audience. John, can you please, I see that you have opened, raise hands and ask questions for the public. I'm going to allow the individuals here at City Hall to speak first. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Darrell Sanders, two zero zero one Northwest Second Street, One Beach. My question is for Dr. Miller and Mr. Gavirlos of the Education Foundation. I wish to have the TV Foundation, technically, we are a technical foundation, that's exactly the navigation portion of what your, what your program with the Wi-Fi, that's exactly kind of up our alley. We do get out in the community and assist with showing people how to use computers, the internet, mobile devices and all that. So I would love to get my foundation involved in the navigation process of getting the information out of the community and helping the residents and the community learn how to use these computers and the Wi-Fi, connect to the internet and all that good stuff. Also, I would like to assist in the marketing portion of building the sponsors for the each individual family. So if someone can contact my foundation to let us know how we can get involved in recruiting sponsors for kids, pretty much. So if someone can leave me their email for that, that would be perfect. Thank you.
All right. Darrell, I'll get you in touch with the Quantum Foundation and the Education Foundation to let them know about your services. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for all the comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Ms. Oyer, who has their hand raised. You have been unmuted by the organizer. Ms. Oyer, you've been unmuted and you're currently self-muted. Would you like to speak?
There we go. Sorry. Susan Oyer, one forty, Southeast Twenty-seventh Way. I would also like to be put in touch with the Education Foundation, whatever contact information you have, to see if I can get some people to make some donations and sponsor some of the extenders. And I'd also very much like to see their presentation, if it's possible to have a copy of that sent to us. I would appreciate it. I want to take this time to remind everyone that the Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities Monday Mingle, which is our social events, the next one or the first one of the COVID season will be on August thirty-first from six to seven PM. from 6 to 7 PM. And we are going to be having a trivia fun social. And the trivia questions will be all about, um, Boynton Beach history in honor of Boynton's 100th anniversary birthday. So if you are interested in being a part of that fun event, please go to the Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities website. And, um, the information's on there and get in touch with us and we can put you on the, um, Zoom RSP, RSVP list. Um, it is limited because we have to be able to monitor all the questions. So that's why I'm saying please RSVP if, if you want to participate. We'd love to have you. And thank you to the city of Boynton and to Ravish Restaurant in Lantana for donating the prizes. Um, I also have a question out there and I, I don't know if this is a call and question or who it goes to. But, um, a friend of mine was in the high, the historic high school the other day for a tour and noted that there's no security for the art. So if we're going to be having kinetic events and potentially, you know, big deal artists coming in, what kind of security is in place? Because apparently this person who was in there noticed that all there was was a security camera. There's no physical blocker to keep somebody from grabbing a piece of art and running out the door. And kinetic pieces alone are usually a couple thousand dollars at the minimum. So, you know, is there something more than a security camera? And I certainly hope that so. I hope there's sensors for the art. I understand we're not putting, you know, gates in that come crashing down like in museums. But I would hope that, um, as we're getting close to opening the Historic High School, the Cultural Center, that we are thinking about the security for the art that we have coming in as we move forward with nicer and more expensive pieces of art over time. And if we're going to want to get top-tier artists to exhibit, they're going to need to make sure that their pieces are secure. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there that maybe this is something we need to be thinking about if we have not thought about it yet. And if it is on the program, it just hasn't been installed yet, then, you know, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems we have a question from Yvonne Scovron. Can the contact info for the Education Foundation be listed on the Boynton Beach website so we can distribute? Uh, so I can distribute to my county community who may wish to sponsor a family to have internet. Um, absolutely. I think that's something we can put in our upcoming newsletter about the Education Foundation because they are located within Boynton Beach. I do not see anyone else with their hand raised or asking a question. Uh, therefore we will close public audience. Um, and also, I, I forgot to mention that we have item 9C, which is a presentation from, uh, LaChee Brooks that I would like to have after the International Kinetic Arts Fair. Uh, does the commission mind if we go straight to item 9C after item 9B?
I don't mind.
I don't mind.
All right. So we're moving on to item 9B, which is discuss direction to city staff for the 2021 International Kinetic Art Exhibit and possibly consider Resolution Number 20-086 authorizing the city manager to sign a proposal and purchase order for Zucker and Lewis Media Group to manage and promote the event currently scheduled for February 6th to 7th, 2021. Uh, do we have a presentation for this?
No, Mayor, um, we, we don't have an actual, like a PowerPoint. Um, just, we wanted to have Catherine and I both have a discussion with the commission um, about, you know, moving forward with kinetic. Um, we, we have, we're just about finishing up on the recruitment for a public art manager. Uh, I'm doing, I'll be doing a, a final interview. Um, I have not done the first round of interviews. Catherine in a, in a panel has, and then I've asked to, uh, see the shortlist. So I'll be interviewing those individuals, uh, I believe this Friday. So I think we're close to making a decision on, uh, filling the position. Uh, in the meantime, as, you know, and Susan, and I know Court, Cortland's on, um, the, the planning that goes into this event is tremendous. And our former art manager did a, frankly, a tremendous job getting the event together. Um, with the vacancy and between that and COVID and everything else right now, it's, we're, we're struggling with that. Um, I don't know. We, we've given a lot of thought to if we want to move forward with the event, we are going to need some help. Um, we have, that's what the resolution is that's before you. If the commission decides to move forward with the event, um, we would be looking at roughly, and it's a, we've negotiated down, um, the price a little bit, but $40,000 to hire someone to help plan and promote and run the event for us. Um, another thought is that sits out there obviously with COVID is what in the world's going to be happening in February? And are we going to even be able to have the event? Um, you know, tremendous planning goes into it as you've dealt with, with, you've been making your decision on Pirate Fest. Um, you know, all the front work is happening, should have been happening months ago and should be happening right now. Uh, so we've also given thought to, do we delay the major event one year and just get, get off our two-year cycle and buy ourselves one year? Um, and, and hold it in 2022 with obviously hoping COVID is gone or managed. Um, or cancel the event altogether, but, um, or do something smaller, do a smaller scale event. So we wanted to, I didn't want to just single-handedly make that decision by any means. So I wanted to, to get some feedback from the commission on, you know, the 40,000 is not funded. I'd have to go in and find it somewhere. If you tell me to, I'll figure out a way to, to, to have to do that. Um, to get some help if we want to move forward with the event and not knowing whether or not we'll actually be able to hold it or what form it will take uh, with the presence of COVID. Or do you want to look at possibly waiting a year and get a new manager on board? Reinvent the event, give ourselves, give, you know, the individual time to get in and make those connections and hopefully have many of them already, um, as a public art professional. Um, so we wanted to hear from you. We need, we need some direction and some guidance on what, what you want, uh, you know, what you think this should look like come February with, uh, all the extenuating circumstances we're dealing with.
Lori, my, my first question is, is what is in the budget for public art? Um, because I don't believe this is for, uh, the leasing of the kinetic arts throughout our Avenue of the Arts. So what is currently in the, the city's budget for public art?
Catherine, I'm going to lean on you on as far as the actual funding. I think there's, now, I don't want to guess. Somewhere we have, I know there's funding for kinetic for the event itself. Uh, Catherine, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, we do have money budgeted for like leasing, you know, getting their installed, coordinating all of that. But the 40,000 hire consultant is, is above that amount that's already budgeted.
About 80,000 is included in the arts budget, would you say, for kinetic right now?
Yes.
And that, that's that's just for the art?
Advertising and promoting the event. It's, um, you know, paying for the, the tents and the thing, you know, I imagine some of the infrastructure that goes into it, paying the stipends to the artists.
The, the aspect that I have, and I don't know where the commission is, is that we need, I would want to see the kinetic art in Boynton Beach in February, kind of like what we've always done every other year. Whether the event happens, that's another story. But I would like to move forward with what's budgeted for the kinetic art to be in Boynton Beach. The, the aspect of the event where we don't necessarily know if we're going to have one or not is kind of secondary where, you know, hopefully, the way that our new public arts director will do is it's kind of the, the walking tours. And so having the, the kinetic art is what brings the art community to Boynton Beach. And so that's what I'd like to continue with and kind of use what our budget is. The, the fact to have the, the three nights and, and the gatherings inside a tent. I don't believe we're currently at the, the point where we can say that February 2021, oh, it's going to be like, you know, February 2020. So I'm in favor of moving forward with the all aspects of the International Kinetic Art Fair except for the three-night event. So that we are more or less dealing with the, the different sculptures where I believe are stipend to the kinetic, uh, to the, the artist that is currently on the Avenue Arts would probably end and we would have to renew that or have no art on the avenue.
Yeah. Now that's a separate program that is funded in the arts, Public Arts Program, which is a revolving, you know, once a year annual exhibit that changes. We have color effects in place right now. That'll, that'll continue on. We also have all the pads that we, um, moved and added into Town Square that will all be, you know, probably year-long exhibits that come in, they're on loan, they stay for a year and then we, we, we change it up and bring in another group. Now, kinetic is typically only here for a very short period of time. Um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that I follow completely what you're saying as far as trying to, so go try to find kinetic artists that will do a short, do an, like an on-loan exhibition for us for six months.
Exactly. The point is having the art here in Boynton Beach, the kinetic art. So the, the fact of not having the three-day event is one thing. Having the, the kinetic art sculptures is what I would want to see here in Boynton Beach for 2021. And I'll let the, the rest of the commission weigh in. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm generally in favor of having this kinetic event in the city. I mean, it's a good thing for everybody. Uh, it puts us on the map. It's an international event. It draws a very interesting crowd. Uh, all good things. Uh, so part of our challenge here is just there's so much uncertainty about, are we going to have it? Are we not going to have it? Uh, Mayor, you said that we should still plan, you know, and go ahead with that. But part of my concern with what, but that particular aspect, what you said is that we might be spending money uh, for all the planning and all of that and committing money, uh, for an event that we may not have. So I was just thinking, so here's an idea. Lori, first, could you tell us, you know, I know we're going to have an opening of the Cultural Center. When is that happening? And, you know, is there a way to kind of coincide those events so you can have the kinetic event during and after, uh, the opening of the Cultural Center? Is that a possibility? If it's not too soon, the opening?
No, we don't have a, a hard date for the opening. They're still dealing with a couple temporary CO issues, but really it's, I mean, it, you know, COVID's keeping us from doing any grand celebrations of much of anything. The building is occupied now. Staff's moved in. We haven't started any real programming in it because of COVID. Um, but I would say by, you know, by October, we're, we'll be ready and rolling to, to utilize the facility. We have the parking now, you know, with our temporary parking. So we've thought about maybe something.
Coincide those two events?
Well, that would be probably too soon to pull something together for this fall. But, you know, there is, and, and that's, and I know Cortland, I think, is on the call. He's the art commission chair. If you want to hear from him too, or Catherine, you can pipe in. Um, you know, a smaller indoor exhibit versus the grander scale, three-day-long event. Um, the indoor kinetic is very different. They're much smaller pieces, obviously, and we would typically have, I don't know, I'm guessing 20 or 30 pieces. We could use the gymnasium for something like that. Finding the artists and getting their, you know, we've, we've had, we've made contact with many of them. Um, I think, Catherine, what are the stats on, on the response rate right now, whether or not they're interested because of, with COVID and everything else going on, they're not, they're saying, no, we're not coming.
Yeah, about 13 that were spoken to, um, previously. There's five that have responded saying they would be still interested.
Also, it's going to be finding the artist too. Only five, yeah.
So can we even have a full-fledged kinetic event with five artists? I mean, five now.
Even still having, no, there's still a whole lot of work to be done to go find artists. You know, and then, uh, the, I just think COVID is complicating it so greatly, unfortunately, with even getting stuff shipped here. You know, a lot of, some of these pieces come from liter, literally internationally, uh, shipping times, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of that that, that we're just, we're behind the eight ball, quite honestly, with, with everything that's happened. So that's what's adding to the challenges as well.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Um, I, I, I certainly would like to have the, the kinetic art, but by the same token, we have a couple of negative going against us right now. One with the, the COVID and the situation that, uh, that has caused this in the first place. Um, I, I, I could easily, uh, just not have it, uh, this, this time to give our new art director an opportunity to get his or her feet wet, to make the contact, to, uh, to get it up, because we have done this and it's been superb. And I would hate to come along and do a half-job and, uh, really discourage anybody from ever wanting to come back. I think the majority of, of the, the artists out there understand uh, where the city of Boynton is right now. And we're, we're rebuilding that piece. So to miss, uh, one year is, is not a biggie in, in my book. I think we can, uh, uh, regenerate that to the level that it, uh, was. Uh, if we were to, uh, eliminate not having it right now, uh, but going along with the, the art pieces along the avenue, uh, would be good. And, and at Town Square, that would be good. But, uh, I think we need to not, uh, rush into this thing and, and just mess it up to the point that it's difficult to, to regain, uh, the position that we had.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Um, I, I would agree with, with Commissioner Hay, um, just with a few suggestions, um, in terms of where we can go and how we can do it. So, um, first and foremost, I don't necessarily want to see us spend $40,000 on a consultant um, to put this together when we could take that same 4,000 and allocate it towards hiring, uh, a new arts director and, and really giving them the opportunity to shine um, as they start their position. So I, I'm really not in favor of that because that, that money could really just be part of the starting salary of that individual. Um, in terms of ideas of how we move forward with the event, uh, you know, I, I really think of perhaps using the Cultural Center and, and doing something on a smaller scale and just, you know, setting it up sometime later next year. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be in February because I don't think that that would give enough time to whoever is coming on board. Uh, but perhaps it could be later on in the year and, you know, after giving them an opportunity to get their feet wet, we could do the event at a later time. I wouldn't altogether forego it because that would mean that we would have to wait a whole other two years because I know it's usually done bi-annually. Um, so whether it's perhaps give it a year and do it on an off-year when we would normally not do it, perhaps that, or within some time, um, next year in 2021, but after February. So those are my thoughts. Um, but again, I, I just really would not be in favor of spending $40,000 on a consultant um, when we could allocate those funds better.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I think we have consensus that we don't want to hire a consultant for the, the February 2021 uh, Connect International Kinetic Art Fair and that we can go on the, the even years, I guess to say. Um, in addition, uh, you know, once we have a public arts director, we can talk about having art on the avenue again. All right. Vice Mayor, did you have any further comments?
Yes, um, I think you essentially summarized it. Um, you know, when I hear there's only five artists committed, I feel like we're having a discussion about trying to have an event when we don't have enough artists in the game or in, or committed, I should say. Um, so yes, uh, knowing that now, and, um, I think we should wait. Uh, but we need to know when to begin the planning, right? Because if we don't set some sort of timeline for the planning, then this may not happen until two or three years from now. Um, so can we say, once we have a, a public arts director, then we can then begin the planning? I don't know if that's something we can, you know, come to emphasis to.
That's the, the public arts director to tell us. That's the public arts director to tell us their planning, not us to tell them ours.
That, that's fair. In terms of possible other uses for the money, I just want to throw out an idea that if we're not going to get a consultant this year, maybe we could use those funds for those wifi extenders, just throwing that out there.
Vice Mayor, those funds to get the consultant, we're not in the budget.
Well, I'd like to find ways to make that happen if possible.
You know, and I, I agree with you in regards to helping the public schools and the digital divide in the city of Boynton Beach, but that's for another discussion, I think.
Absolutely, just throwing out there, Mayor.
I have an idea on that, I'll bring back to you. I'll send something out to you.
All right, and then in addition, I actually got an email from the Chair of the Arts Board to speak. So I'm going to unmute his mic to allow Cortland to speak. Cortland, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stephen Grant, Vice Mayor Ty, City Manager Lori, and members of the commission. I appreciate it and thank you for your really concentrated understanding of this event. And it is important. I'd just like to point out a few things about the event, and I'll start with the small things that I think add up to big things. It's a free event. Free is a big deal. Everything has got a price tag. Even when you go to the Pirate Festival, which is sort of a free event, but once you buy the tickets for the kids on the ride and this and that, it adds up to a hefty fee, quite honestly. The art show is an international show and it attracts international people. When you're present, as I was, it draws every language spoken, every person present and all people interested. So personally, I find it paramount and almost a signature event for the city and the community. So I would hope that, you know, this new person would definitely make this a priority. I don't believe delaying it a year is necessary. I think that it's a safe event. Granted, last year was our busiest year. To my count, 5,000 a day on the actual days open. There was never really like a club atmosphere. And now we have a new civic center or cultural center that can accommodate a much larger space rather than a small tent. I really think that it is a good way, as Commissioner Ty mentioned, to really highlight our cultural center. So I think we should kind of stick to our guns personally, and I think I speak for the commission on a whole. I do believe a delay is in need, but I don't believe a year is necessary. I think coming out of season and maybe into spring would be all it would take because I think we could operate it during COVID. And I'd like to remind members of the commission that DeSantis is discussing Phase Two as, as of today, which would mean a lot more restrictions would be lifted. I want to touch just briefly on the Cultural Center and I've been fortunate enough to take a couple tours there, which it is amazing. And the theater can accommodate 500 people seated, you know. So it is massive. It's a beautiful, large facility with doors to the side where the interior portion of the kinetic could be shown. I would not be worried with, there's only five committals. I'd like to remind members of the commission and city managers that past years, some hung on, we never got full quotas. Some would stay on for another run, some we'd lift off half, you know, it doesn't, this is not a sort of a stop and go issue, you know, this is, does have a bit of fluidity. We're dealing with artists and times and issues. We did request 10 pieces for the walking portion of Arts Avenue and we received 13 committals and I received them as well as the previous city arts manager. She shared them with me. And I think that most of those would come through with the proper management of the process, which we're missing, that critical ingredient. So I think it's the, to the mayor's point, the Arts Avenue Sculptural Pieces are, is a piece that's ready to move forward and can work. I feel confident in that as the Chair of the Arts Commission. The interior portion of the art kinetic art, I think we just need a little time. And lastly, I'd like to say, I don't think $40,000 is a lot of money for our community to come out of COVID, to come back into art, culture, people, international. I think it's an important piece for a nice kickstart to the next part going forward. So I appreciate letting me in there, Mayor. Thank you.
My pleasure. And then I also believe the, the consultant is here as well. Is that correct? And does the commission want to hear from the consultant before we make a final decision?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Grant, I have unmuted Valerie Zucker. Thank you. Valerie, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, this is Valerie Zucker. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I'm also joined by my business partner Nicole Lewis. She's on the line as well. And I'll be as brief as possible and I'm going to change the scope of what I planned on talking about. But before I get started in that, let me just give you like the 20 second tour about us. We are a very hands-on, veteran PR, marketing, advertising, logistics, event planning group. My partner and I have been together for quite a long time. And we've done major events such as the Miami Beach Aaron C Show. For 15 years, we've done the Boca Raton Concourse de Elegance and have gotten on the national radar for that. We've also done Art Basel, many things in Art Basel, many prestigious things, as well as the Tribeca Park in New York City, the sculpture that was dedicated to diversity. And that diversity happened to be transgender. So one of the focuses our group is known for is diversity and involving the whole community because that's what it's all about, especially in today. So with your thought process today, I'm going to change some of the creative thoughts that we had on what we would do for you to this. This year, because of COVID, at the beginning of COVID, we had to cancel the Aaron C Show in Miami Beach. We pivoted. Now what does that mean? So you, as a group, probably remember hearing fighter jets flying over your houses and you had a chance to walk outside or be invited to the heroes that brought us to where we are today or helping us today. And those, those facets actually took the Aaron C Show out of Miami Beach. That was all the Aaron C Show, that was working with the government, that was getting creative, that was rewarding the heroes on our front lines, that was turning the Aaron C Show into a national salute to America's heroes. And it became a national event. So we said, listen, let's call this a pivot. Let's look at this a little differently. We can continue to bring in as many artists as we possibly can get our hands on. And by the way, we have relationships of our own that we can also add to the pot of artists, so we can help you with that. We could do things that are very digital related. We can do meet the artists on a Facebook Q and A series. We can have that done. We can actually, again, we can still do sort of a mini event. And as the doors open for comfort, should you decide or not decide, we can work it both ways. We're very on point with being able to strategically plan at the last minute. So we could do some, some events scaled a little differently, but we can also make this community a part of what we're doing. We can create some sort of a synergy possibly with Michael's Craft Stores or Office Depot that is looking to give away merchandise to our community kids, to our schools, where kids can actually build pieces, families can build pieces, be a part of this themselves. They can actually make statements with these pieces. So we can actually involve our own backyard, not just the international artists, but our own backyard. And again, because this is sort of a new concept of pivoting, we'd have to kind of resubmit the plan. But thinking a little differently on this is something that a lot of people are doing with special events now. I know, for instance, on our Concourse de Elegance this year, we're going full steam. There's not going to be any changes. We're using an airport hangar. We're using the outdoors of the Boca Raton Resort. Again, all of that is outside. The only thing we're doing differently is the food. We're not changing the amount of people. We're being a lot more stringent on sanitization, wearing your mask. We're being careful, but truthfully, again, just like Cortland mentioned, the city looks like it might have some good news ahead, which is Phase Two and then eventually Phase Three. So we would bend and be flexible based on the scenario.
And so that's, that, that information, I think, is something we didn't have when we started the conversation. The fact that we do have commitments from the different artists for the Avenue of the Arts. And that's the, the main thing that I was hoping for with the Arts District. You know, Valerie, I want to thank you for your presentation. You know, we have not spoken before. And I don't know if any of the commissions spoke with you, but it's, it's that aspect of having art and have something to do and something to look forward to that is kind of lacking in our society today. I don't know if the rest of the commission has spoken to family and friends, but it's like, you know, the discussion for Thanksgiving, are we actually going to be able to get together? It's still unknown. And having the, this to look forward to in the city, whether it occurs or not, is definitely going to make things better because regardless of the event, whether it's digital mostly or whether it's, you know, we're in Phase Three and COVID is more of a thing in the, of the past, we are giving our city something to look forward to on the international scale. And we have that ability and to make that decision tonight. I think that's kind of where I'm at is that let's go work forward and see where we are because based upon, you know, the, the numbers, you know, the, the school district just got their plan approved. We, I believe the county is speaking with Governor DeSantis to get into Phase Two. And the, the aspect of the government stopping the, the gathering, the freedom of assembly, I, I don't think we should be doing that. I think we should making sure and requiring that our residents and visitors are safe. And then I think that's the key aspect because we cannot stay inside forever. And that's something that we need to, to help our residents realize is that the, the battle of COVID isn't going to last forever and that we, we have to start looking at the end of the tunnel because we're, we're still going, we're still in the middle of it now. So I actually would like to change my vote and be in favor of having the, the event. And hopefully the, the city manager can find money in the, the public budget, public artworks or something so that we can move forward, maybe team with Parks and Recs. And that's what I'd like to discuss. Commissioner Hay?
Valerie, I want to thank you for that information because again, that was not something that we had to, to operate with when we started this conversation. I'm, I'm encouraged by what you're saying. And I, I, I feel that we can pull it off on, on a smaller scale based on what you have done. Your track record seems to be okay. And I, I just feel, because, you know, let's, let's, that was one of our signature events. And I don't want to drop it completely. But I didn't, I didn't know that you were on board as far as being ready to go. I thought we were going to have to have the time to interview and maybe, you know, it was going to be not enough time, but the input that you just given me, I'm ready to, to reconsider and, and give it, give it a try on, on a, on a smaller scale in a, with our cultural center being one of the major placements for, for the event as well as the, the, the other Avenue pieces. So I, I'm going to, I'm going to step outside the box here and, and, and give it a, give it a, give it a shot. Give it a chance.
Well, it sounds like you all have a different perspective and, and I appreciate that. You know, part of being in the industry that we are involved in is that you have to, you're thrown lots of curveballs in our, in our industry, from logistics to public issues to challenges in general. And that's just what we're used to. And in fact, sometimes the best things for us are the challenges because they make us bigger and greater and we have to reach farther. So I think in this situation, we need to just have clarity on how much we want to do and then add some creative ideas to it. And believe it or not, it can actually give birth to a whole new dimension of this event.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just need some clarity on timing. You know, my position in the beginning was and still is, I'd like to have this event, but, you know, not this year. And my only other concern was what happens if we can't have it? So can we at least come to an understanding of when we may have this event? Would be next summer. You know, it seems like a delay, you know, as Cortland had mentioned, is likely. But what kind of delay? Are we thinking next summer?
For me personally, I think the, the date that is currently planned is the sixth and seventh, which was the, the first weekend of February is what we have had it in the past. And it's kind of like creating these types of cultural events. You want to keep it on the, the same routine year on the biannual basis. So I, I think, so if you're, if you're looking to push it back one year, that's, that's would, is your decision?
So my questions around that would be, would we have a public arts director by that time, right? In other words, is February still a practicable, a practical and achievable target date? There just seems so much uncertainty. I mean, I guess my question goes to Lori. You know, could we even have that without knowing when we may hire a director about the artist getting committed? Is that still a practical target date?
You know, we're, we're ready. If you decide you want to, go ahead and hire Valerie tonight. We, we have everything here and ready for you. That's the resolution, the agreement. It's been reviewed by legal. We're ready to go there. So I, I believe so. I think, you know, what scale it will be, I don't know. But I think Valerie's ready to go and Catherine, jump in if she's been dealing with it more than I have. And Cortland, you know, they're, Valerie, can you get it produced by February?
We definitely can. I just think there needs to be some tight conversation about the expectations based on the amount of artists and what additional supplements that will bring to the table. So the answer is yes, but I just want there to be a sort of a broad understanding of the dynamic this year.
Yeah, I think it's going to, it's definitely going to look different. It needs to for a variety of reasons. And I, I think it's a, it's an opportunity to make it look different, which actually could be, is a positive. Definitely with COVID, I mean, the scale of how the event will be produced, as Valerie will tell you, will be definitely different. But yes, we can do it for February.
If it is achievable on a practical level and we can do this safely and perhaps it's going to be scaled down, I could support this. I guess my only last question now, as I mentioned before, is what happens if we can't have this? So we've planned it. Does this mean, but we can't have it? So does this mean we'll be spending twice or how would that work?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't.
That's the, the question. Let's say we're, we're still in Phase One.
So here's how I want to look at it. I think that we can quickly plan an infrastructure of what we know we have concrete if we're in Phase One and it continues to be in Phase One. I think we have to look at that as the basics. And then I think we have to look at good situation, bad situation, and somewhere in the neutral ground, some accessories that we add to this, a lot of digital platform, a lot of community involvement. You see that pivot part that I was talking about adds a whole new dimension. It's actually the event that everyone can touch from a distance, no matter what, and you're still seeing the city of Boynton Beach. So regardless of how many artists we get signed up or the amount of people we can bring to the table, I think we're looking at this a little differently, which we're going to have to resubmit the platform of consideration on the dynamics for this year.
Okay. You've answered my questions. Thank you, everybody. And Commissioner Katz and Romulus, did you want to weigh in? Okay, Commissioner Hay?
Just one question for Valerie. Do you have a, a, a list or artists from your past that you can contact or that you have done something like this before?
Yes, I have a brief list of, of people that we actually work with fairly recently that I can engage conversation. that I can engage conversation with. One that we just did something in New York City and Miami Beach. And he probably would sign up with this right away. So that's one you can probably count on. There's a few others. So the answer is yes.
Okay. So I I I think we now, Lori, do you need a a motion just because we're spending money?
Yeah, let's adopt the resolution and then that'll allow us to enter into contract.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
If you could just clarify for me what we're approving.
Right now, it is Resolution R twenty zero eight six.
Right, and and I I just wanted to hear, I I missed what was the answer to Commissioner or Vice Mayor Pinzerga's question in terms of what happens if we can't have the event? I I didn't hear the answer for that.
I believe the the answer was we will, they're planning for if the the county is still in phase one, you know, they will have that as the worst case scenario versus phase two or phase three. So that we can plan, so that they will plan accordingly to where we are in the the phases of bringing our society out of this pandemic.
I mean, I asked Catherine, I know when you were working on the contract with Valerie, did you talk about a phasing of the payments on the contract? Should as we move forward, you pay as you go on the work? And then if you end up canceling the event, I mean, is there a cancellation clause in the contract? Jim?
It has the standard language of our POs in it. Excuse me, this is Catherine Montos. It has our standard language of the the POs in it. And the idea was we'd pay on a month-to-month basis. And that way, if we do call it quits at some point, then the payments would stop at that point. But I mean, the way we're talking, it sounds like we're going to have some version of this. It's just a matter of, you know, the details of what it'll look like.
So I I just, I am, I'm a little, I just feel like we're rolling the dice and I don't want to do that. So I'm asking, are we to to confirm? Because that this would be the only reason why I would support this is, are we actually plan having a physical in-person event in February where people would be coming to the cultural center to go look at these art pieces? Because I don't think a virtual version of this event is, would 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 be beneficial. If anything, I think it would be frankly, a waste of time. So are we physically going to be there? Are there going to be art pieces? And are people going to be allowed to walk through the venue and go look at these art pieces? That's my question.
Yes. This is Catherine Montos. Yes, I don't want a virtual event either. I mean, if there's some, if part of it is virtual, just so that we can access people that can't physically come, fine. But I would like an in-person event because I think that we can do it safely. You know, if we're under stricter constraints, we'll we'll figure that out. But we'll figure out a way to to make it safe and so properly socially distanced and adhering to guidelines. Unless, yeah.
You know, as I mentioned earlier, I am for having the Avenue of the Arts filled with kinetic sculptures. So I believe regardless of whether the event is virtual, we will have the ability for our residents and visitors to walk the down the Avenue of Arts. We are opening up numerous new restaurants there. And I think that that's the 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 point is that we are trying, still trying to, you know, live our lives. And that's where I would see the Avenue of the the Kinetic Art Fair is that the event may be smaller, but the impact should not be.
So to clarify, because now I'm hearing two things. Are we having the event at the cultural center? Or are we having the event down Ocean Ave? Or is it both?
It is, it is both. We, I don't think we can have the the Avenue of the Arts kinetic art without an event and discussing all the different artwork that we have. And that's kind of, I I believe that's where I'd like to see it move forward. As I mentioned earlier, is that we should have kinetic art in the city of Boynton Beach for our annual or biannual International Kinetic Art Fair. Whether the scale of the event of the three-day event for the indoor kinetic art is scaled down, I think that makes sense. In addition, finding the the different corporate partners so that people can learn how to make kinetic art on by themselves, either at home with supplies that they might have lying around the house or, you know, people who want to come to the event and so that we have the donation so that they have the ability to do kinetic art with their children on another day. I think I'm in favor of moving forward with the discussion of having the event and having the Avenue of the Arts filled with kinetic art.
So I'd like to hear my answer question, my question answered from staff or the consultant.
First, Cortland, if you're still on, when, because the the Avenue of the Arts is a separate program than the kinetic, International Kinetic Event. When, so I know, and you commented earlier, and that's where I need your help on how far you, we we've gotten in terms of procuring the artists for that year-long exhibit. Is that art going to be kinetic themed?
Okay, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Lori. So the Avenue of the Arts is basically a street-long avenue where all the new renaissancees for downtown Boynton Beach is happening and currently opening. And it kind of curves through the Mangrove Park there and through Two Georges and Banana Boat. And there's roughly thirteen pads that affix vertical sculpture that are the size of a person or bigger. Just to give you loose interpretation of it, in October, we switch those out, which is, you know, upon us. And we've been as far as not only securing the art for those pads, but we over-secured them as per the commission's direction. So we only needed seven to 10, but we accepted 13. We've had follow-ups with five. That's not, personally, I don't have a concern with that. I think we can easily increase from that. And in past years, we also didn't meet quota and just switched out what we had. It's important that that art changes, in particular on the art Avenue of the Arts, because it's where the pedestrians and the community come to to congregate and kids run around on bikes and so forth. So I think it looks neat when it changes and I think that's important. And I'm in agreement with the mayor and others that that I think it's important to see that change. It does change every year. Just a reminder, it's a biannual, the kinetic art show. So it, this year, it's kinetic. Following year, it's anything goes, right? As long as we approve it, everybody sees it, so forth. So I hope that answered your question. Was there another?
It's, so so Christina, the answer to your question is it'll be both. It'll be, and and that's where I wanted to make sure the mayor, because that's the the Ocean Avenue program is is different. But on the kinetic event year, kinetic art is placed for that year-long exhibit. So that's right. Take care of the the mayor's desire.
And and what we do is we secure another 10 to 25 artists to showcase their work internationally in a tented event. This year, we're fortunate enough to actually not, well, I'm I'm sure there's a fee associated with using our own facilities. But we did rent the tents and air conditionings and trucks and all of that. But we're going to be in the Cultural Arts Center this year. And I'm absolutely confident we can put art in there. And I'd also like to just say, if we have to move it a few months, I think we move it a few months. I don't believe a year is necessary.
So indoor and outdoor, Commissioner Romulus, as both and maybe some scaled-down version of it. But it, that's what it's been in the past, both outdoor and indoor.
Okay, and thank you for that clarification, Cortland. I really appreciate that. That clears up a lot of things. So my my last question is, in terms of how we, I guess, you know, these artists, so you said we, I guess, over over-recruited for the outside Avenue of the Arts thing. But from somebody who said earlier, we only have five or so for the indoor art. Are are we going to be good on that? Are we going to be make meet those numbers before February? If that's where we go?
No, to clarify, the five are for the outdoor.
Pieces. I think getting the indoor is is much, is easier, Cortland, would you say? Finding the artists for the smaller tabletop pieces and the indoor pieces?
Well, I guess the overall general question is, do we have enough time to get all the artists and all the pieces that we need if we do it in February?
That's where I have to ask Cortland and Valerie, because me know, Catherine, can we know? Can potentially?
Valerie.
So my my answer to that quickly, and I'll make it short, is I believe so. And if not, if we, as the Arts Commission Chair, we'll move it 30 days or 45 days. We won't resolve ourselves on a specific date. But we are going to have this event for the community and we're not going to wait a year or two years or three years to do it. And as I said, I, it's an outdoor walking event. The docents direct people on the avenue. They're placed on specific points of interest in highway intersections, road intersections, federal highway. There are senior members that walk this. It is a open-air event and the interior portion fortunately is in our cultural center and it's much larger. I think, I think we could pull it off, yes. And I think if we can't, it's only going to be 45 to 60 days we need to to do it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'm done with my questions. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm ready to make a, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, hey.
Yeah, I just have a a point of clarification for myself here. Just, I I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it. If we vote to move forward tonight, Lori, are we saying that Valerie would would just be helping us with the kinetic art? Or are we saying that she will be the new Arts Director and this Friday interviews will be canceled?
No, sir. We're, we're, I'm gonna, we're still going to move forward with filling the position as a permanent employee. Valerie will be a contractual, a company that will produce, market and help us put the event together. She's going to be in an Eleanor role, but we're, we're going to be hiring her on the side to do it. Because that's not what I'm good at, or Catherine, Valerie does it. So it's it's a consulting basis.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
What's the starting salary for the Art Director that we're going to be hiring, Lori?
Oh, Catherine, I need you on that. There's a range.
I believe the starting salary is 60 and it goes up to 90, yeah, something in that range.
What do you mean it goes up to?
We have a range. Yeah, there's a, our pay plan is established with a minimum, a mid-range and a maximum of what a a pay grade could be. I don't know the grade off the top of my head. Julie's on, but I doubt she has all 800 positions memorized. So yeah, depending on experience and negotiations is where someone will fall. We don't typically hire beyond the mid-range. So it's somewhere between the minimum to the mid when we bring someone in.
Got it.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I think I've heard plenty of information to to make a motion. And I think the bottom line here is that, you know, this event can happen. I think we agree that it's important. And if there's any issues, there might be a slight delay in staff and and team can work around that. So I'm going to go ahead and move to approve Resolution R twenty zero eighty-six with the understanding that we we may have a scaled-down event and we're going to do everything we can to make sure it's safe as well.
No, second that.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone who opposes? State so by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, did you say nay?
No, no, no. I just wanted to say something. I was just going to say to Valerie, I I would love to see this event hit art Basel level. Okay, that's, that's my optimistic, half-glass-full perspective here. That's what I'd like to see.
We will definitely work towards that. Thank you so much for your time today.
And Valerie, I I have your your contact information. I'll be contacting you just to have a conversation and get your ideas and give you some information that I have moving forward.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with the the commission's permission, I'd like to to go next to item nine C, which is the presentation by staff on the parameters of SHIP and CDBG programs provide homeownership assistance for residents. I didn't realize it was going to be two hours into our meeting that we have this public information. I know, which they had her Facebook presentation. And so I'll ask John if we can record her, this presentation and also put it on the internet on a subject, side subject compared to just as a individual, as as part of the regular city commission meeting. So LaChey, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon or good evening. LaChey Brooks, Instrom Community Improvement Manager. I think you may need to unmute my director, Mike Ropp, as well.
Okay.
I go, I went in and did that, Mayor Grant.
Got it.
Um, we can go to the first slide. I can't see, is it, I don't see it there.
Right now, it says housing programs and funding sources is the image that we have.
Okay, well, I'll just go through it. I can't see it on on my screen, so we'll just proceed. The city of Boynton has two housing programs. We receive state funding from the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program. Most people know that as SHIP. The other program we receive funding is the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program. Next slide, please. SHIP, our SHIP funds are used to strictly for homeownership to preserve housing. We do our owner occupied rehab with that program as well. So the four, we call those four programs strategies. So the four strategies that we have through the state program, as you see, there's purchase assistance, purchase assistance with and without rehab, rehabilitation and disaster repair mitigation. The disaster repair mitigation only comes into play when there is a disaster declared by either the governor or the President of the United States. Next slide, please. SHIP, the general rules are listed there. With SHIP, we can use up to 120% of our funds. So we do assist a lot of moderate income with those funds. Our program is a 15-year, 0% interest loan. And as long as the applicant remain in the property for the 15 years and there are no violation, meaning they're not renting, they're not, don't remove their homestead exemption, we forgive that after 15 years. Our purchase price, our maximum purchase price is 280. We have different income categories. The amount that we give for the income categories are basically the same, up to 60,000 if you're low income, up to low income, moderate income. We do have a cap of up to 20,000. Typically, we give normally 60,000 and then 75 for the low if we do any rehab with the properties. The moderate income, we normally only give 10. And if we help with a little rehab, we can give up to 20,000. Next slide. SHIP, for the last three years, we just used our allocation. Those are the amounts that we receive. We have not received any allocations for this fiscal year. Our SHIP year starts July 1st through June 30th. So we have not received a allocation. And it's not just the city of Boynton, the entire state. so we have not received an allocation, and it's not just the City of Boynton, the entire state. We have not received an allocation. The Governor has not released any funds for this year as of yet. And I just listed some top rehab projects. We normally upgrade electrical planets, panels, handicap accessibility, roof repair, hurricane mitigation. And I will make a note that once we go into a property, we do do the hurricane mitigation for all rehabs that we go into if there's sufficient funds. So that means we give out the, we equip the houses with impact windows now, and we do the hurricane doors and so forth. So windows and doors. The rules of allocation, SHIP has rules that we must abide by. They're listed there, so we must use a percentage of our funds, a minimum of sixty-five for ownership, a minimum of seventy-five for construction rehab, a minimum of twenty percent for special need. That means that we must assist special-needs families as far as SHIP special-need guidelines. So their guidelines for special needs varies. And then we can only use a maximum of twenty percent for moderate income. And we do get to keep ten percent of our allocation for administrative fees. There is where we, just a brief summary of how many families we have assisted for the last three years. Next slide, please. Now we're on to Community Development Block Grant. Next slide, please. Most people know it as CDBG. Most people have heard that term before. And our CDBG funds are federal funds, and they are more restricted than our SHIP funds. The federal government allows three categories that we can use those funds for, and that's to benefit low-to-moderate-income households or persons, prevent slum and blight, and meet urgent needs after emergency order. Again, the meet urgent needs only comes into play after an executive order of a disaster is declared. And that will be really under the federal, so the President must declare the disaster, okay? Next slide. The City of Boynton is referred to as an entitlement city, meaning that we receive funds directly from the federal government, from HUD. Some of the other, most of the other cities in Palm Beach County receive their funds from Palm Beach County. There are only five entitlement cities in the county, and the City of Boynton is one of those entitlement cities. What we use, our services, we have sub recipients that we assist. We have four that we're working with right now, and some of the services they provide, they're a public service organization. Three are, one is not, but they provide educational violence prevention, homeownership counseling and housing, production, rehab, and they meet the emergency needs. The Community Care and Center was big at meeting our community need. They had a medication program for the elderly. They had meal truck. They provided, had a food pantry, so they provided a lot of services to our elderly and disabled residents. We do have Legal Aid. Legal Aid provide services, fair housing education and outreach activities. They go out to some of the condos. They meet with senior citizen. We actually refer any applicant that think that they have been discriminated against for housing to Legal Aid, and they provide the services and assist them free of charge. And also, we have the Pathway to Prosperity, really helps with family self-sufficiency. They have an educational program, they are job training, and they also provide financial literacy. So their main goal is to assist family get out of poverty, to elevate themselves out of poverty. Next slide. I'm sorry, on the previous slide, I did not mention Boynton Beach Faith-Based CDC. Boynton Beach Faith-Based CDC is one of our sub recipients. However, they're not under the public service category. They are a community-based organization that provides special services. And Boynton Beach Faith-Based Organization really assists us with our housing and delivering houses. In the last three years, they've produced a total of about eighteen units. And then this year, nineteen twenty, they have completed four units, and they have two units under construction. CBDG eligible activities, these are just a few activities that we can assist with CBDG funds, public facilities and improvement. And what it provides, that if we, if it's a place that low-to-moderate-income clientele will service, that will service that clientele, then we can pretty much assist that facility. We also, the majority of our funds, we do acquisition, construction, and rehabilitation. We can do it for facilities. If you want to go to the next slide, we have an example there. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe two slides down. But we do have an example of where we provided our facilities, and that's the senior citizen, the Boynton Beach Senior Citizen on Federal Highway. We were instrumental, and we used CBDG funds to assist that building, because it is perceived that a hundred percent of the clientele would be elderly and would benefit the low-to-moderate income. Also, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Boynton Terrace. It's now Ocean Breeze West, but previously, we assisted with the demolition and clearance of that building, and also assisted the residents, we provided assistance to relocate the residents to other apartments, rental units. If you go back one, I'm sorry, I skipped around, I'm sorry. Again, it's our housing improvements, owner-occupied rehabilitation. We also, any unit that we assist, whether it's with SHIP funds, state funds, or federal funds, we always perform a lead-based paint testing, so we need to know if we need to do an abatement, so we assist with that. And also, we also help with removal of barriers for the handicapped. So we make homes handicap accessibility. We have had to go into homes where elderly have a stroke, and they can't get in the building anymore or into their house, so we built the ramp, made it handicapped accessible, widened the doors so that they could use a wheelchair inside the house, inside the bedrooms and inside the bathroom. Also, we can use our funds for economic development, as long as our funds will be for employment training, job creation, and retention. Fifty-one percent of the jobs must be for low-to-moderate-income person. And that's one of the main programs that we have, that we do have a problem with that category. And with, it's not just the City of Boynton. A lot of our programs, a lot of the sub recipients of CBDG have a problem with that economic development category. It is a monster. It's a lot to manage, but it can be done. And we're looking at ways that we can use that category and allocate money to economic development. Next slide, please. We can, thank you. Listed is a summary of ineligible activities. We can only do housing or new construction. The only way we can do new construction is if we fund a community-based development organization to assist staff with COF, to facilitate, so we would have to pay salaries or something in that nature. And that's how we actually are using our funds currently with Boynton Beach Faith-Based CDC. We, of course, can't use our funding to ungovernment buildings. We can't use it for operating and maintenance expenses, and of course, political activities. Next slide, please. The last three years' allocation, for the past three years, the amounts listed there are what we receive in CBDG funds. We designated or allocated funds to rehab. We allocated funds to our sub recipient or to our community-based development organization, and then public service. Below, you'll see that we do have maximum allowance, and we can only, we get planning and administration, twenty percent max. Public service will limit it at fifteen percent. And then there's no maximum or minimum amount for us to give to, for housing, or to allocate to rehab, or to the community-based development organization. Next slide, please. Required reporting, for our state program, we must file an annual report annually. You'll probably hear from me again in next month with that report. And then every three years, we have our local housing assistant plan that really generates our activities, those four strategies that we listed. We update that plan if we need to, and that's done every three years. CBDG, annually, we have a report. We have an action plan. We have our, it's called the CAPRSC, Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And then every three years, we have our consolidated plan, and that plan is, will be updated next year, two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. I think, Mike, I think this is your slide, that you're gonna jump in and give us some insight on this, the considerations and opportunities?
Actually, LaShay wanted to share some of the fun in presenting this work of ours. Nice work, LaShay. Oh, well done. This is Mike Rump, Development Director. Just not to go through twenty's bullets, but I think just to explain a little bit about our exercise in preparing a slideshow, which was more than that. It was a closer look at not only the guidelines, the requirements, both HUD and the State Housing Office, but as well as our own internal policies for administering these programs. Exercise took us deeper into this, I think even forcing LaShay outside the box that she has been trained under, under her predecessor. There are opportunities for change within our own policies, and that's what this does. It's sort of a little bit of a strategic plan that we're going to, we're gonna use as a guide to continue from this point to try to improve programs. Probably just most noteworthy is, one of the bullets which explains this, let me indicate this. Example of sometimes how difficult it is to abide by these programs, particularly the CDBG program, how complex it can be, which LaShay kind of hit the tip of the iceberg in describing. We are, we are still spending funds, rehab funds, in the CDBG program, two and three cycles back. Now, what does that mean? That means that maybe the criteria is difficult to spend, or to select eligible rehab projects, or the projects are not being identified quickly enough. Improvement Division is really a division right now of two people. We are organizing a multi-department staff effort to reorganize this division, and also to operate as a team. So really, there's going to be more than just the two individuals in there now that are contributing. But in the rehab program, we have excess dollars. We have not even touched last cycle's dollars available to us as soon as we can identify rehab opportunities. So the Development Department, along with the Building Division, specifically Building Inspectors, Adam Temple's inspectors staff are going to join this team. And the whole idea is to work with LaShay to understand eligibility requirements for rehab projects with individuals who are on the street, who identify deficiencies, violations, condition violations, and things like that, like by our building staff, dilapidate conditions. And also, the bullet, last bullet indicates we'll use interns to help solicit the information. So that's what this is. This is kind of our, the icing on the cake, the cherry on the ice cream, if you will, of this exercise to explain to you all the depth of the two state and federal programs we work under to say how we'll keep evaluating it and really strive to improve the programs. With that, we close out and offer you the opportunity to ask questions of us.
So first off, I want to thank you for giving this thorough presentation. It is extremely informative, especially with all the things that are going on right now, that if people need help with assistance to their homes, we have programs available in the City of Boynton Beach. And I have, and so for my experience, people have asked me for assistance, and I've referred them to LaShay, and she has helped them out. So I encourage my fellow commissioners to, you know, speak to their residents if somebody hits a speed bump in life that make sure that they contact our Community Improvement Manager to help them out.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
One of the issues that I've had, not, this isn't directly towards LaShay or towards Mike, this is simply just some of the residents that have reached out to me. You know, you're looking at a population that has language barriers and that has issues with dealing with government, because they just don't know how to navigate it. So a lot of people, I've sent them over to LaShay with the hopes that she has been able to help them. But my question is, do we have anybody within the department? Or do we have plans of hiring somebody that is specifically within this department to help? That is Creole or Hispanic-speaking, because of the fact that, you know, this is something that I've seen time and time again, where sometimes there's that language barrier, and they just don't even want to go ask for help because they don't know, they can't talk to somebody.
I can answer that question for you, Commissioner Romulus. We do have individuals here that speak both Spanish and Creole. And anytime I've had any language, you know, people that speak limited English come in, we have a list that we go out and we pull everybody in, and we haven't had a problem. They will even sit down with me and translate one-on-one, the application, and help them complete it right here in the office. So please let them know that, don't be afraid to come in, that we do have persons on staff that speak both Spanish and Creole, and we will be happy, even if I get, sometime I can call on the phone and we get, you know, someone just to translate or talk on the phone. So, and we have had very good luck with helping our Hispanic and Creole community with repairs and so forth. So please refer them, and if, you know, give them my number directly, and I will be happy to get someone and schedule an appointment to do a one-on-one interview with them.
Thank you, LaShay. Thank you for all you're doing.
Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'd like to ask a question for LaShay, but first, thank you to both LaShay and Mike for that presentation. That was a lot of information. So in all likelihood, I'm gonna have to circle back with both of you, one-on-one. But for now, I'd like to ask about our sub recipients of the CDBG funds. What accountability measures, if any, do we have regarding our sub recipients? Do they submit some sort of report? How do we know that the funds are being used as we think they should be?
With CBDG, first of all, the funds are reimbursable funds, so they must spend the funds first, and then we reimburse them. We do monitor our sub recipients. We go out and do site monitoring. And also, when they send their reimbursement requests, we look at it with a fine-tooth comb. Additionally, they must apply. And to be a sub recipient, you must demonstrate that you have the funds in advance, or you have leveraged funds that you can pay out those bills and let us reimburse you. So we do require their tax returns. They must present us with an audit statement annually, you know, their audit statement. So we are very, very, we're, it's, because ultimately, it falls back on us. And we do, they may get upset with us, but we have a lot of, we have a mon- And we do, they may get upset with us, but we, we, we have a lot of, we have a monitoring process. And not only with me, when they submit their reimbursement, it goes from me to our finance department, well, Michael first, Mike, and then our finance department, and they review it as well. So we do have some measures in place to monitor, to be sure that those funds are spent correctly.
That is wonderful to hear. I'm glad you said all that, because you are right. At the end of the day, it is, it comes back on us, so thank you.
And I, and I also wanted to note about the city's website, boynton-beach.org, that up in the corner, there's a little globe, and they have it in Asian Creole and Spanish. So anybody who has access to the city's website can, you know, type in LaChey Brooks' name and find the information in Creole or Spanish.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Seeing no more further questions, we'll go back to a regularly scheduled agenda. Item five, administrative. Advisory Board Appointments. We have one alternate available on the Arts Commission, two regular, and one alternate on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, two alternates on the Historic Resources Preservation Board, and two regular and two alternate on the Library Board. We have one applicant. Commissioner Katz, your name's on top.
I'll nominate Marshall Levine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, would the commission like to pull any of the items on consent agenda? I'd like to discuss one item in 6A. Does anybody have any other items for the consent agenda? So, under purchases over 10,000 in June of 2020, under item 10, through Broadcast Systems, the Police Department ordered 12 monitors for the Real-Time Crime Center. I kind of want an update where our Real-Time Crime Center is, and what is the, the process for businesses to share their IP address so that they have more feeds within the city?
Good evening, Mayor. This is Michael Gregory, the Police Chief. And can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thanks for the question. I'll be happy to update you. We are under construction, you might say, with the crime center. As you noticed, the item you have before you for those monitors, they are currently being installed in the facility now. We've already received the Motorola Command Centralware Software. We've had our kickoff meeting with that vendor, and they're installing and configuring that system right now. It is up and live, excuse me, is live and operational. And they're in the process of configuring, configuring it, and setting up the rules, as well as the connectivity to our other systems as we speak. So all of that is underway. The video wall, which will draw, the software for the video wall, which will drive the monitors, has been delayed a little bit. It was, we were hoping to get that on the agenda tonight, but we're not, didn't make it. We'll look to have that on the next agenda for September 1st. It had to be pushed off. So the last piece of your question had to do with, how can folks participate with partnerships with us to share videos? We, we're planning for two methods for that to be accomplished. The first will be that we'll have a registration site, you might, you might say, on our website, where folks can go there and read the information that we'll, we'll have to provide to them, where they can register that they have a camera in a particular area. And that will be used mostly as a listing, so that if we have an incident occur in their community or in their vicinity, we can have a quick reference as to where the local cameras might be found. And then we'll manually send staff out to contact them and try to get a copy of that video, if they have recorded something during the timeframe of the incident that we want to do, do something. So it speeds up that process of discovery of cameras, if people can preregister. The second method would be to actually have a live connection to a camera feed at a local business or a residence. We aren't ready for this just yet, but that is the future path, a roadmap that we're going with the crime center. And we'll, when we get closer to that start date, we'll have the SOP in place and instructions for folks of how to contact us and voluntarily share those IP addresses and find out what the technical requirements are for providing the digital access to their, their camera system remotely. There's a couple of different technical means of doing that, but you don't need to get in the weeds tonight. We just want to let you know that we do see that as a future direction for the center, once it's up and operational. And we'll be sharing a lot more detail on how people can contact us and what the requirements will be once we have the system up and running.
All right. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the, the application for the, the list of cameras available to the Police Department.
So do I. Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. I'd like a, a quick information on item 7C in regards to the timeline associated with the development of High Ridge and Gateway, as our police station and fire station are there. And like to know how long that's going to cause traffic issues.
Good afternoon, Mayor. This is Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works and Engineering. We did reach out to the, to DOT and Palm Beach County, as both of them have projects in that area. The DOT project started, as you know, back in January of 20. Right now, they're scheduled to be, looks like completed September 30th, 20, which then allows the, the county to then come in and finish, commence their project. The bids were open for the county project. They're scheduled to award the project on September 15th. Based on that, they'll issue a notice to proceed approximately October 1st, sometime in that timeframe. And then, according to the county, they have 180 days to complete the project. Hard drives was the apparent low bidder. So looks like that High Ridge project will start sometime in October of 2020 and be completed in six months.
Okay, so six months is...
Yeah, they seem to have a pretty tight timeline on it. So I think, again, just to make sure that the project moves forward and completes quickly, knowing the impact to the, to the residents and to the city.
And then my quick question for item 7F is in regards to, I was looking at the backup, and one of the things that I want to make sure for our residents is that we have different heights of the seats. You know, I know my grandparents, if they try to sit down on a low seat, they're not really going to be able to get up. So I just want to make sure that we have seats available for people of all access, you know, both of low, medium, and high levels for sitting, or the ease of sitting down and getting up under the, the current contract. 7F, that's the, you're referring to the furniture purchase?
Yes.
I have this, to let Colin answer that. Colin, do you need to be unmuted? All right. He must be having trouble getting out of his chair.
Sorry, my microphone broke right at the right, wrong time. Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, we did reach out to J.C. White, and we are going to work on a couple of changes to, because that was a great point about seating heights, and look at what kind of options we have to make that happen.
All right, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from the City Commission? If not, may I have a motion to approve consent bids and purchases over 100,000?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. John, can you open up questions and hand raising for these, this public hearing?
Mayor Grant, those options have been enabled.
All right. Jim, ordinance 20-029?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of a portion of a 10-foot-wide utility easement located at 2735 Southwest 23rd Cranbrook Drive. Cranbrook Lakes Estates PUD authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the City Commission? Don't see anyone's hand raised. May I have a roll call, please? Crystal, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. So did five though.
Thank you. We, Jim, do you mind explaining why we're taping ordinance 20-030?
Yes, Mayor. This ordinance was added at the last commission meeting in an abundance of caution, because a order of the governor allowing for virtual meetings made a distinction between the budget meetings that are coming up in September and regular city commission meetings. The, the former would be permitted to be conducted virtually, the latter would not be. The governor has been kind enough to issue a subsequent executive order that resolves that conflict, so that both budget hearings and regular city commission meetings are approved to be conducted by virtual meeting until September the 30th. So this ordinance is not required at this time. But rather than set it aside forever, I'm asking that you leave it at first reading, and we'll bring it back on second reading if, if something happens in September that, that requires us to move forward on it.
So, does the governor's order allow specially set meetings to be virtual?
Yes.
Okay. So may I have a motion to table?
We'll move.
I got a first by Commissioner Hay, a second by Commissioner Katz. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? As this item may be tabled indefinitely, we will rely on the city attorney to bring it back on the agenda as needed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to City Manager's Report, here a presentation of the proposed City Hall Innovation Center and Hospitality Amendment Solicitations by Mark Heffernan, President E2L Real Estate Solutions. Mr. Heffernan, I believe you are self-muted. If you would like to unmute your audio, you should be able to proceed. There you go.
Yes, thank you. I believe that David Scott will be presenting the first four slides, and then we will be picking up from his introductions.
So, all right. My quick question is, is that, is center supposed to be spelled that way?
No. Well, actually, David Scott, Director of Economic Development Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach, that was the presentation by Mark's team, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, no. There was an extra R in there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
But it is spelled C-E-N-T-R-E. I think they were looking for a fancy spelling for the Innovation Center.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to, to know.
Yes. Yeah. It was, I think they are branding it that way, but that's the way it was spelled in all of our documents.
All right, and so, yeah, I definitely want to talk about the branding of City Hall and other things as well, moving forward.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to speak to this item today. We wanted to present the Boynton Beach City Hall Innovation Center and Hospitality amenities. Those, the hospitality amenities really refer to the two café spaces that are planned, one for City Hall and one for the cultural center. So today, I will present the overall vision. The City Commission has directed us to proceed with. And then Mark Heffernan will speak specifically to the RFP and the plan for the Innovation Center and the plan for the hospitality amenities. At the end, he will then present the planned schedule to get this information out and seek solicitation. And we, hopefully today, will get feedback from, from the commission on that solicitation and that scope of work on behalf of the team. And then we could proceed to issuing the solicitation. According to the schedule, we're planning to try to get that done in September, so we can get that movement as quickly as possible. Thank you, John. If you could advance our slide once. Just a little bit about Town Square, and as you know, City Hall is done, and we've moved in. It's a beautiful city hall with the library as, as well. The cultural center is done, as well as some of the other facilities on, on campus. And those facilities continue to be built, and we thank E2L for their leadership and partnership along with the CRA. Next slide, please. The commission has seen this slide before. We really, within the city of Boynton Beach, really support our small businesses and our startups. And we understand that working with our startups requires a, what we call an innovative entrepreneurial ecosystem. So we seek to always try to identify those startups, whether they're through our, our own incubators, the, the city issues grants for incubation of small businesses. And we have two current incubations going on, well, actually, three. One for women, one for minorities, and one for youth. We connect them with networking spaces. And we, again, provide workshops and supporting linkages. And we try to streamline the process. We work with them, handhold, provide handholding. And we encourage our businesses to tie into the ecosystem that is our support for those startups. And just an example, during the, the last couple of periods during COVID, we issued 50, over $60,000 worth of grants. CRA issued over almost $1 million worth of grants. We are currently working with our CDBG funds to provide grants in that area. So we do as much as we can to support our small businesses as well. And then, of course, marketing, newsletter, social media, wherever we can, we push out information. Eleanor talked about how we work with her to provide that marketing within our, our resources as well. And so we try to provide full wraparound services to support our, our business, our small businesses and startups. Next slide, please, John. Connecting to resources, this is a graphic that talks about how the innovation space fits into our, our support network for entrepreneurs. We have the Boynton Beach Library that provides not only services to our community, but they are tied in with Makerspace Technology. but they are tied in with Makerspace Technology. We'll be providing resources and programs around small businesses and startups. And they will also have certain equipment available for for startups such as maybe three D printers as well and and other facilities. The innovation space will, and Mark will talk about that a little bit further on. The innovation space will provide our small businesses with support, whether that's financial literacy, whether that's connecting to other resources around the city, whether there's training. That will be incorporated into that Innovation Center. And then we play a role along with the CRA in providing incentives for location assistance, whether that's the rent reimbursement, whether that's facade improvements. Through our grants, we tend to provide a pipeline for success for our small businesses and startups. So they can come in, take advantage of the Innovation Center, take advantage of the resources at the library. And then as they graduate and grow financially, then we will help them and incentivize a location within Boynton Beach, a brick and mortar location within Boynton Beach. We we are in this year's budget requesting a line item to support a retail sector study for our small businesses that will help us understand the current retail and restaurant economic condition. Also, that study will help us or that vendor will help us recruit recruit new retailers and restaurants and retain existing retailers and restaurants. And this we think is important, especially in this time during COVID. A lot of our businesses are having to retool, rethink how they approach their 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 market sector. And we think that's important to have that information. How that feeds into our Innovation Center, we believe that data will be helpful as we identify those cohorts and provide the and tailor our our services towards supporting those businesses. And then helping them plug into some of our vacant spaces within, I mentioned earlier, within the city. We in economic development go through, as well as the CRA, go through our city and identify large commercial spaces that are available. We we have to ride through, actually physically ride through the city, identify locations that have leasing signs up or for sale signs up for commercial property. And right now, according to our information, we have over about over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial retail for sale or lease within within the within the city. And so we understand that we have the space available. And by connecting all of these resources together, we think that we're working very hard collaboratively to identify those resources for our small businesses and startups. And then you see the last little little location here, which is coworking spaces. There are several coworking spaces out in and around the city. And we tie those in, whether they're co-locating with co-locating within this our Innovation Center, or whether or not we are tying that system, those private systems in to our our strategy. Cowork Boynton was one of those partners that we worked with a lot in those coworking spaces. So we tie our incubators into Cowork Boynton and provide that that system. So next slide, John. Now, Mark, we'll take it from here and talk a little bit about our strategy for our coworkers, our our innovation space.
Thank you, David. Great introduction. Good evening, Mayor Grant. Commission Lori, great evening to be together. It's always wonderful because we can see you. We're not sure if you can see us, but y'all look great. As you know, when we started this design build process with the city, it was all about the innovation and the future of Boynton Beach. And part of that concept was to create an Innovation Center. As you will note on the presentation here, there's a area designated sixteen hundred and eighteen square feet of incubator space that we have been working with Averson and Young with from the very beginning, the conceptual process of the design coupled with ideas and innovation that we got from Colin Groff and others with the city staff of how to incubate and create new business for the city of Boynton Beach. Coupled with the incubator space is also what is shown as the direct access for the community center as well as areas beyond that, which face the front of Boynton, Oceanside. And as you know, down on the bottom section here, we currently are occupying that space as we're closing up the completion of City Hall. And know that that is now ready for occupancy of other people coming in to use that space. Business training, the mailbox, physical address, coworking, subject matter experts, offsite office managers, all that are noted here are now available to the city and to anybody that wants to do business in Boynton Beach. If if you would note, and we've been working closely with the city, Wi-Fi is everywhere. It's inside the inside of the buildings, it's outside the buildings. It's truly a smart city, which was always our goal from the beginning. Next slide, please. So what is an operator? The operator for the space, we're going out to the market, working with Averson and Young to find a college, a university, or a private operator that will bring all the expertise to the city to create this incubator that ultimately creates the knowledge and the growth of what can become the ultimate business and business environment for Boynton. Next slide, please, John. So the solicitation, we're proposing to the city with Averson and Young to go out to the marketplace to not only create an incubator, but also to bring in two viable business entities to operate the cafe and the snack shack, which I did not create these names. I'm not a French major. I will not take privy to these names, aspiration U, but we will let those that created this speak to these intentions. But I think the the ultimate goal is to have this space where not only can you come and create the the enterprise, but to celebrate the success of Boynton for everything it's meant to be in the business world. Next slide. So cafe and help me out here, David. Sateh.
Did they?
Yeah, I I didn't choose the words, but I I get the meaning. It's all about health. In today's world, this is a space that we're proposing next to the the current Children's Museum. This would be next to the Cultural Center. It's a seven hundred and fifty seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot space, which is on the southeast corner of the current facility where we would serve any of the children and the parents coming and going from the Cultural Center and also to the museum, Children's Museum, to really respect what it's like to get out into the environment and eat healthy. We are planning outdoor seating for this space, which we've already confirmed for the city we can accommodate. The snack shack, as is 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 proposed, would also offer anything inside to people that are going there for the cultural events. This could be for anybody attending musical events, anything that we're doing with the arts. The events, as I heard earlier, and I love the idea of taking forward the kinetic arts. I a hundred percent, I won't go into details, but I think it's the best thing you could ever have in the city. Keep the momentum. Next slide, please. So timing, how do we get out to the market? How do we get the best and brightest and most eventful venues really for the city to come in and put in place both the cafe and the incubator? We got an RFP, August thirtieth is what is the current plan. We would launch that on September seventh with deadline on October ninth to get responses. We would shortlist those candidates by October sixteenth. We'd place the interviews on the nineteenth through the twenty third. We'd select the top three by October twenty eighth. And then we would present those back to the commission on October thirtieth. And our goal would be to have back from the commission who you would select by November sixth to be your participants, your vendors in the Boynton Beach Town Square. Next slide. So I have on the call here with us, Averson Young, Keith O'Donnell, who has been patiently now reinforced patiently working with Averson Young and E two L and the city. He was the one that was gratefully going out and finding your space to reside in while we were demolishing buildings and getting your new buildings built. He is ready now to populate and bring in the new ventures that would make the city and the town square the next success of the smart cities. And Keith, I'll leave that up to you if you'd like to join in and add any comments.
Well, thank you, Mark, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Mayor Grant and council members and Lori, the city manager, and Colin and 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 Mr. Scott and team. So we've been working actively for a couple of months now and evaluating how to best go to market. So, you know, our experience has been renovate, redeveloping management park years ago. And and something that's very relevant to what we're trying to do for the Innovation Center is is what we've been doing for about twelve years at the FAU Research Park and as along with our our partners there, Tech Runway and the incubator space with Andrew Duffel and the and the FARTA board. So we've incubated probably fifty companies, including five or six with Scott Adams and Dan Kane and such. Many of them have already graduated out of the Research Park into the former IBM complex. And some of them have even headed up to Delray and Deerfield Beach and Boynton Beach. So, you know, that's going on number of years, a couple of decades when it started. And so it's very mature. So we're we're excited about this opportunity. You, it's very innovative what you all have designed here. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions? Okay. You know, my my first question is, is that our statement is that I look forward to seeing the RFP or the the three different entities of the incubator, the snack shed and the cafe Sateh at our September meeting. And that way the the public can comment on that. Because I would like to, you know, give the the Boynton Beach businesses who are aware of the our new City Hall and library space to to, you know, to chime in and have their input heard. So that's the one thing that I'd like to see at our next agenda is the RFP. Because I know with our work at the CRA board, we know how to review an RFP. And this is a big one because the the contracts will be the first ones in our locations. And if they are not the the best candidates, we will hear from our residents and visitors. The second question that I have is, is that you failed, I don't believe you mentioned the the Makerspace in the library up above. And how do we coordinate that Makerspace with the, you know, this innovation area? The the problem that I have is, is that, you know, we've noticed in Boynton Beach at our career fair, Mark Heffernan, you were there, that there was a dearth of skills within the city of Boynton Beach. And I feel that, you know, moving forward with an entrepreneurship center, most entrepreneurs fail. It's actually, oh, you know, one out of ten succeed. So this is kind of the the step back that I really want to ask the City Commission is, is that do we want to work more on career skills and education with, you know, Makerspace? Or do we want to try to have people start businesses in the city of Boynton Beach that may not necessarily succeed? So that's that's kind of where my aspect of this innovation space is that I'd like to work, partner more with the library with this Institute of Higher Education for career skills and education rather than for businesses to try to use City Hall, because this is, this is a public space, not necessarily a private space. Coworking, you can do that. And so, you know, I don't the the, I don't know of any other city that has the innovation space in their city hall. So that that's kind of where I'm questioning, is this the correct path moving forward using taxpayer dollars to help businesses in this manner for location? You know, the city just expanded their, what's it called, ours, home employment, where people can now hire a worker to work with them and expand at their house. And so I feel that I'd like to hear what you guys have to think, because I definitely want to curtail the RFP for the the needs of our residents, not necessarily the needs of the, you know, of the country. Because we do not have any corporate office locations. I was looking at Averson Young's website, the max space in Boynton Beach for office right now is six thousand square feet. That is not enough really for a large corporation. That's more the small and medium. And I don't understand how the the businesses are going to expand in that location and be in Boynton Beach. And we don't necessarily have the the corporate offices for those businesses to expand. So that's kind of where I'm asking the the City Commission is, is that what is our goal? Is it for economic development that we have businesses here? Or is it for economic development to provide earning capabilities for our residents? I'm more for earning capabilities for our residents, whether it's owning their own business or having the ability to work for someone else and grow their business. And that's that's the the statements I have regarding that.
So Mayor Grant, great, great questions, great points. First of all, as you know, we spent the last three years working with the Building Wealth Program of the city of Boynton Beach. And we've had great success success with that. However, that's just the beginning. To your point, we have spent probably the last ninety days working with the library and Craig as the director, talking about the Makerspace and what he is preparing and has already in place to incubate the education, the workforce, the education, and the well being of business. You know, he has two three D printers already planned or in place along with laser cutters and other components, which unfortunately we did not include in this presentation, our mistake. We will make sure we update the commission with that information. We have been incorporating all of that information and that will go out with the RFP when we go to the market. So it is fully intentional that the advertisement of Boynton Beach is in business to attract and not only grow, but incubate businesses that become the space and the place that grows beyond just the six hundred, six thousand square feet to a hundred thousand square feet. We really want to bring the business to Boynton. That's the, that's the whole plan of this incubator space. So with that, I'll let Keith speak to any specifics regarding how So, with that, I'll let Keith speak to any specifics regarding how we would incorporate that into the RFP.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, this is Colin Graff, City Manager. I do, I want to reiterate what, what Mark said. The library is definitely part of this incubator space conversation. And we call it an incubator space, but it's just really a space for the, for the citizens of the city to use to do a bunch of things, just to grow new businesses, to grow existing businesses, to get educated on, on how to go work for somebody else. It's starting a business that might be bought by somebody else. And it's using not just all those, all of the technology that's in the library and all the knowledge that's in the library and the staff that's in the library to help them grow. It's also giving them space. We also, you know, have space in our cultural center. If you've been on my tours upstairs, there's some couple of classrooms upstairs that's absolutely set up for that kind of education. So, it's tying all of those things together and having an operator. That's why if you noticed on the slide, it talked about operators of higher education colleges and things like that. Some of these colleges have done a very good job with exactly what you're talking about. It's bringing it in, offering it to our residents to do multiple things. It's not just a new business, but it's people who need to learn, you know, simple things of how to fill out a resume. I know Craig, and he's on here, he could probably talk, but I'll brag about him without him on it. But the library, the library staff has great programs like that that we're going to expand into this, this program. That's, that's the direction y'all had given us three years ago, that you wanted to expand all of this capability that we have to make sure the Boynton Beach residents grow their wealth. And that's the whole purpose of this. And it's, and so, the program encompasses all of the new buildings in our, in our new development, all of the space and all of the different programs leveraging them together to make them work, to do exactly what you said that I think that is our vision. And I think everybody has that vision and everybody is on the team. So, we probably didn't do, you know, we probably could have added 40 more slides to there to talk about all that. But I just wanted to tell you that yes, all of the things you talked about are included in this program.
Okay. Thank you. And that, that's kind of why I'm glad, you know, hoping to see the RFP before it goes out, just so that, you know, you know, it's not just the innovation space, it is our downtown. And that also leads to the question of the branding of it, is that last year in October, the city commission at that time decided that we wanted to have the option of the branding of our downtown, and we never got that back. Lori, do you remember that conversation?
Yes, it's, it's on Eleanor's to-do list, but honestly, she just hasn't had, we just haven't had the time yet to put into it. But it's, it's a major undertaking, but she's still on. If you want to have her comment to it, she could probably speak to it a little bit better.
And that, that's kind of where the, the RFP, it's kind of like, that's something that we are not set in stone regarding Boynton Beach Town Square unless the commission has changed their mind. So, I'd like to make sure that we include the, we stop including the Boynton Beach Town Square as the branding of our downtown, but it still has the project name of the downtown. In addition, you know, the Boynton Beach Cultural Center is the name of the organization that runs our Schoolhouse Museum. So, you know, this is the conversation for the city commission is the branding for the next 100 years of our downtown. I'd like to have the conversation with you. I know it's on Eleanor's to-do list. Eleanor's to-do list is way too long. And so, I'm hoping that we include the branding as part of the RFP so that we get the ideas and that we can also ask public comments what we want, get public input for the city's future. So.
Mayor? Been pushing the downtown, downtown Boynton, hashtag downtown Boynton, downtown Boynton as part of our brand. I mean, it's, it's more than just the town, just town square. Downtown is bigger. So, you're right, Mayor. The town square is the title of the project. That's not the name of downtown. So, we're right there, Rissy, on that one.
Mayor? I think I'm unmuted at this point, Mayor.
Yes.
That is on our strategic plan for next year. This year, that was, that's one of my three plans on for the following year. We had to do a five-year-out plan. So, that is on for next year to be our goal to achieve. And yes, we are 100% with you, downtown Boynton, hashtag downtown Boynton. And we definitely will get the community together and have branding groups and so forth and so on to determine what those branding goals will look like. So, I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
And Eleanor, when we say next year, do we mean October 1st?
Oh, you're really good. Lori, is that on a fiscal year or strategic plan, or is that on a?
Do you mean January 1st? I just want to know.
It really runs on the fiscal year. So, we'll just, you know, give her a little break.
I just wanted to know what next year means because I didn't know if that meant.
You're right. It's October 1st.
Okay. I will, I definitely have a conversation with you in the coming weeks about it and we can get it lined up for, for the fall.
Thank you. And Mark and Keith, I want to thank you again for your, your presentation. I'm sorry that I, you know, I didn't have all the information before I made my comments. And correct, it's, it's the aspect of using not only our commercial locations, but our industrial locations that I want to focus on. Because we do have so much industrial land in the heart of Boynton Beach that needs to be redel, redeveloped. And, you know, there is very few M1 spaces as affordable as the, as the ones available in the heart of Boynton Beach.
Mayor, this is David Scott. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I just want clarification. You, you stated that you wanted the branding included in this RP. Did you, did we change direction on that?
No, I, well, that was my statement before all the information I had. I just want to include that so that the developers or the applicants to the RFP know that the branding is not set in stone.
Gotcha. Okay. Got it.
Because normally, when they make a project, when they create an LLC, that's kind of what we get.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, Mayor, this is Mark. Thank you for that. Again, the past Boynton Beach Town Square, we would love to work with you beyond just the town square and what else we can do. But we'll be coming back to commission here in a couple of weeks with specifics on this RFP, and we welcome to present that and get your feedback.
I appreciate that as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Ronnus, thank you for being patient.
Sure, of course. I just want to touch a little bit, and I did a little background while we were having this conversation. I want to kind of spit out some numbers here that I think are relevant to the questions that you're asking, to the concerns about having a, a space like this in a city building compared to, that's probably something that hasn't been done by other entities. But I think it also just, it's the fact that as a city, we've said that our objectives and our mindset is geared towards building community wealth and changing the trajectory in the future of how our, how our community operates. So, the numbers that I want to spit out are, looking at FAU Tech Runway's website, they, they are basically, you're, you're seeing over $275 million in revenue generated, over $113 million of funds invested into the businesses and entrepreneurs that have gone through their, their process. 101 properties of intellectual property has been created, 587 new jobs have been created, 199 internships have been created, and the average full-time salary of these jobs are about $80,000. So, when you think of what we're trying to do here in Boynton and how we're trying to make sure we give opportunities to our residents and put something that is right in their backyard, right here in our city hall, I think all of that speaks for itself and those numbers speak for themselves. In terms of co-working spaces and incubator spaces, you have 1909, which is all the way in West Palm. You also have one in Delray. We just got the co-working space from the Quantum Organization. But, but, you know, of all of those, you know, you're always having somebody leave the city in order for them to go to any of those co-working spaces or incubator spaces. Creating one and making it affordable and making it right here within the town, town square, within the downtown attracts all those things that we've been talking about for years. And it really helps to expand on our vision and where we're trying to go. So, I, I'm 100%, maybe even more, 110% in favor of what's being done and the direction and trajectory that I believe it will take our residents and our community in the near future. I wouldn't even say long-term. I really think with everything that we've put in place, this is just one more step towards that process, and I wouldn't do anything to deter that. So, that, that's really the quick information I wanted to kind of bring into this conversation because I think it's relevant to talk about that. And if 1909 and some of the other organizations put out their numbers, I'm pretty sure we would see how having spaces like this in areas that are developing or redeveloping really makes a big difference in terms of how it, it sets members of those communities
And is there any other questions from the commission or statements? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Mark and Keith, and we look forward to your, the RFP's next meeting. All right. Moving on to item 11A, proposed resolution number 20-087, authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement with Pulte Home Company LLC for the city-owned parcel known as the Nichols Property.
On that, Mayor? I mean, Colin can speak to you. We have the agreement prepared.
Yeah.
You have questions? Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, Colin Graff, City Manager. If you have any questions, if anybody has any question, I can answer them. We also have a representative from a Pulte Group also available if there's any questions.
All right. So, the, the main question is, is the timeline associated with this purchase and sale agreement? I know that it is for over $2 million. However, they're not giving us the $2 million as soon as we sign. So, can you reiterate the times and the dates and the funds associated with this purchase and sale agreement?
Yes, I can, I can do that. So, I'm going to, I'm going to summarize it because there's a lot of dates in there. But basically, the Pulte Group has already deposited a, a small down payment to help cover the cost of our legal, legal costs to prepared agreements and all of that. And that's non-refundable if they back out of the deal. So, that's already occurring, and that's why we're at today's point. Then they, they will have 90 days to do what they call the due diligence. That's to collect all their information and all that. When they finish that, then they have 360 days or one year, 12 months to receive all of their development approvals. At the end of the, when they receive all the development approvals, we'll close on the property and we'll receive the remaining balance. There are a payment after they finish the 90 days, there is another payment to the city. The, a couple of things I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of is, is as long as it moves forward, the money that they're paying upfront is, is non-refundable, that covers our costs. If they terminate the contract, you know, the purchase and sale sometime before they close, then they carry all the costs. If the city chooses to, after we get past the 90 days and we're moving into the 12 months and they're in the process of getting their development approvals, if the city chooses then not to follow through with the, with the contract, just, you know, the city commission votes and say, we don't want to sell it now, the city would then be responsible for the costs that they bore up to a set amount to get, to get those, which, which we believe is a fair thing to do if they're spending the money and, and we don't have a reason to stop. Staff recommends approval of this because the property, again, as y'all are aware, this is outside the city limits. It's, it is, could be a good development for the city in the future. It will have annexation agreements in place, so when at such time it can be annexed, it will be. They will also be water and sewer customers, so we'll have revenue coming from those water sewer customers. So, overall, it takes a piece of land that right now is very much underutilized and costs the city money to maintain because it is in the county and puts it on, while right now, the city won't receive any property tax, the county will. Maybe they'll be nice to us and put a little back into the city. But, but I think it is good for the city to, to move this along and let Pulte Group move through their process to get their development rights.
Perfect. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission? Not, may have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. See no further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, we got proposed resolution number 20-088, approval of settlement agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Echols 76 Limited and Echols 86 Limited, authorizing the city manager, the city manager is designated to execute the settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This gets to you by virtue of a settlement offer in a foreclosure action. The city has, leans on the property in the $850,000 range. The property is worth in the $250,000 range. The defendant, the Echols 76 and Echols 86 LTDs have decided that they'd rather settle the case than litigate the case. And this agreement sets forth their proposal to settle. End result would be the city would own the property. It is free and clear of any encumbrances, and we would take it in that condition.
I thought we would be full of encumbrances.
No. Our title search indicates that it does not have any encumbrances on it.
So, besides our liens?
Other than our liens. Those would be, those, those, those would be merged into our ownership and our lawsuit for foreclosure would be dismissed with prejudice.
So, there's, but we're, are we getting a quick claim deed or a warranty deed?
We're getting a warranty deed.
Oh, excellent. Okay. So, may I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, before we leave tonight's meeting, I forgot to mention that some sad news. This past month, our grand marshal for 2017, Enrique Zunada, the CEO of the Soup Kitchen on West Boynton Beach Boulevard, passed away. So, I just want to let the city know that we lost one of our good resident, our good citizens from Boynton Beach. For the future agenda, I spoke with a couple of staff members regarding the city's urban tree canopy study, and I'd like to have a discussion of ways of funding sustainability in trees. The three aspects that if the commission so allows would be a tree fund for developers, a utility sustainability program, and a memorial tree fund that I heard was in the books here. But I've never heard of it before last week.
We've received donations in the past sporadically, Mayor. So, we, we set up, what is it, a 691 account? So, if someone, we're working with someone right now who wants to donate a tree and a bench, I think, in honor of her father who's close to passing away. So, we utilize that fund. There is no real balance in there, I believe, but I'll, I'll check and see. But the structure's there, so.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of it. I want to know the city's policy regarding the, the memorial tree fund.
Okay.
Because, you know, if we're to get to 20% urban tree canopy, we're definitely going to need help from the, the residents and businesses.
The staff is planning, I believe. Colin, correct me, but I think you said September 1, you were going to be ready to bring some recommendations to the commission on the tree canopy.
Yes, we're going to present the study on September 1st. And we're also going to, at the end of the study, we have a couple of discussion slides on some, some funding sources that we, we think we can have, we want a discussion with the commission, where they would like to go with some funding sources. So, we will have some, some ideas and then discussion, and then if you, we get some guidance, we can move in that direction.
Right. So, Lori, I know that we're coming up to the next fiscal year. So Lori, I know that we're coming up to the next fiscal year. Can you help, uh, with the future agenda items of what the city's already planning? So that we as the commission can figure out, uh, what's going on?
Not following you, Mayor. On what now?
Normally, you know, I'm sorry, um, you know, uh, regarding the future agenda items, we used to have a lot longer of a list. With Tim, Tim Howard was here telling us what's going to happen the next two to three months.
Okay.
So, for example, I didn't know that next meeting, we're going to have the tree discussion. You know, did we know that before this meeting? And if so, you know, that's kind of what I would like to see on future agenda. So that we as a city commission knows the pipeline of events that are going on with the strategic plan. All right. Thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes. Commissioner Hay, then Vice Mayor?
I, I just wanted to make a quick observation. Um, it, it's probably, uh, should go to the supervisor of election office. But I noticed on yesterday during the voting, I got a call and I went out to Isa Hester Center, which was closed because that was where they had the early voting. And I must've turned around, uh, helped about over 30 cars of people because they were lost and didn't know where to go to, to vote. And I, I think that I, I guess maybe we could put, uh, work with the supervisor of election, put some signs or something because, uh, it was a lot of people who were, uh, confused and didn't know where to go. So I, I stayed out there, like I said, over an hour. I turned away. I helped them over 30 different cars. Some people had two, two to three people in the car. So I, I don't know. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. But like I'm saying, it may be supervisor of, of election. I don't know what we could do, Lori, if anything.
So, uh, Commissioner Hay, I did speak with, uh, Wendy, uh, Link regarding that issue because I believe it was moved to the, the temple up on Northeast 26th Avenue, uh, that precinct. And I, I spoke to her, she's like, no, can you just put it back? And she says, well, that's where the early voting is. So if the people in that precinct want to vote there, they have 14 days to do it. So that's, uh, the, I, I definitely asked the supervisor of elections. And I think I would suggest that we try to put that back. I know that she mailed out all of the voter registration cards with your correct precinct and address. So it's, it's something that we will hope, you know, just have to educate our
Okay.
public about because I don't think the supervisor of elections is going to change it for November in the middle of, uh, an election season.
Okay. I, I did have a, a phone number that I could have on the call because Isa Hester was the place that many of the people voted. But some, uh, they told to go to the temple and others went to St. John. Uh, so, you know, it, it was confused.
Gotcha. All right. So yeah, I think we'll.
But anyway, I'm glad you talked with them.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to add a discussion about, uh, potentially a mural program for the city. I just wanted to gauge people's in, all of your interest levels. I think murals may be a really great way to help beautify the city. Um, and so I just want to gauge where you guys are at on that. And I'll work with staff to put together some information. It's always good to have a little presentation.
For me, I'd, I'd wait for the, the public arts director to be hired before we make any sort of decisions on public art.
Well, yeah, I wasn't looking for any final decisions. I just wanted to gauge interest level and, uh, any themes that might be in mind. But if you'd prefer that we have that discussion after the public arts manager, I, it's certainly not something that's a rush.
Yeah, it's adding, uh, more work for staff when we can have a person whose job is dedicated to that. So I, I'd like to, you know, have it as a future agenda and, uh, keep in mind that may be a topic for our staff to discuss with, um, the, the applicants, what they would like to have a mural, uh, regarding a mural program. But I am definitely in favor of a mural program. Um, but I kind of want to wait until we have someone that can run with a program before we put the cart before the horse.
I think that's a sensible request. I, originally I thought that's something that could be just an initial discussion that could be had without a director. But I certainly don't mind waiting until that person's hired.
All right. All right.
Mayor, I did have an issue on the future agenda.
Yes.
On 13D, um, we have a discussion on the status of town square scheduled for this September the first based upon a discussion at a previous meeting. I think Lori and Colin and I had expected to have received already from JKM, uh, their proposals to modify the current agreements. And, um, I know that those are forthcoming, but we don't have them. I think it's going to be challenging to, uh, analyze what's contained in those proposals. Possibly have a conference with, uh, the representatives of JKM and then be in a position to fully discuss it, uh, with the commission on September the first. Not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying I think it's going to be challenging and, uh, I don't know what the commission's thoughts are about holding that date or pushing it forward.
My, my comment says, is that, uh, I definitely agree that if we don't, you do not receive it by Thursday, uh, by the end of business tomorrow, that it doesn't give you adequate time to review, uh, the easements.
The Eastman part is, is the really easy. We have, we have dealt with that. We've reached agreement on the documents themselves. It's all the other aspects of the project moving forward, uh, which is, um, you know, the timeline for doing it, building out the garages and the private sector residential components. Think those will be complicated, but, um, hopefully, uh, following your guidance on that, if we get something uh, by tomorrow, we'll probably be able to work it, uh, forward. Um, if not, I guess Lori and I will let you know that, uh, there won't be time to fully analyze it and discuss it with the JKM representatives.
Sounds good to me. Yes, Commissioner Hay.
If, if, uh, Jim, if you don't get it by tomorrow afternoon, uh, moving forward, would you then notify Mark again? Or, or what, what would we do in the case we don't get it?
Um, the, we had a communication within the last week that has every indication that we're going to receive it. And I do think we are going to receive it. It's just a question of when. Um, I anticipate it's going to be a rather comprehensive revision to the agreement that's currently in place. So, um, we'll open up that dialogue. You know, JKM is our partner in this transaction. So we have no problem communicating with our partner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other final comments before we adjourn?
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
To the city attorney, you said you do anticipate you'll receive something by Thursday as in tomorrow or next Thursday?
No, I ha- I have no date in mind. The last communication from, um, John Markey was that we would have it before September the first. And that, I don't know what date that means, but, um.
Okay. Is, is it possible to have someone reach out to him if, if, if it's the will of the board, um, tomorrow and contact him, have someone contact his office and ask for an update on the status and an expected delivery date?
Certainly. We could do that.
Uh, I would personally appreciate that if there's no objections because my, my concern, and I hope this is not what happens, is that either a, a late submission that doesn't allow for proper analysis or no submission. And then we get to the next commission meeting and if, if the party intends to come to the commission meeting and speak to us, having not obliged our previous request, I personally will take exception to that and have no interest in, in a public dialogue if they refuse to comply with our very simple request to, to explain what they asked us to entertain, which is an alternative plan to the contract conditions, which are in, in serious, um, you know, potential to be breached. So I just publicly stating that, that, that I hope that there is, is no intention behind this delay. And, and it doesn't lead to an attempt to circumvent our request and come speak to us directly when we made clear what we wanted.
Commissioner Cast, those, those were my exact, uh, uh, feelings when I, when I brought it up. Uh, I, I totally agree with you.
All right.
Thank you.
And I just see that, uh, Susan Oyer has her hand up. I don't know how long she's been holding her hand up, but. Yes, Susan.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. My hand's been up for quite a while now. Um, and back to the Nichols project is when I put up my hand and was ignored. So, um, I, I, my question at the time was, I just want to make sure that we are keeping this property within the city limits or being able to annex it in. Cause the last thing we need to do is get rid of property. We are too small and we should be acquiring property and building our city.
Yes, the, the comment that it is not in the city limits and that, uh, a power of attorney is going to go with the purchase and sale agreement so that any annexation, uh, of the, the property will not be objective upon if there is a connection to that property.
Okay. So we will be able to, um, annex that into our city at some point.
In, in addition, as we do not have a podium or, uh, virtual podium for you to go up on. If you would like to speak on items that are on the agenda, you could please let me know at public audience. So that way I will make sure to look for you on any of the items that you'd like to speak on.
Thank you. I, I do usually listen to the presentations and then come up with questions during the presentations. So I don't always know ahead of time, but thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the commission?
Mayor, have most.
Appreciate it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. John, you'd like to provide us with the closing?
Yes, Mayor. As a reminder, a reported version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at www.boynton-beach.org. This concludes tonight's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending, uh, the city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
All right. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.